The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I move that the resignations as listed be approved.
Sandra?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sidnikow?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
I move that the transfer of Katie Seltzer, Associate Principal at Franklin Middle School, 11 months, to Director of Pupil Services slash Equity Coordinator, 12 months, effective August 15, 2018, as presented, be approved.
I'll second that.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
And Katie is here.
Yes, Katie is here.
I move that the transfer of Shiba May, Associate Principal at Nicolay Elementary School, 11 months, to Associate Principal at Franklin Middle School, 11 months, effective August 15, 2018, as presented, be approved.
Second it.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidnikow?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
And I don't know that Shiba's here.
She was not here, no.
Okay, all right. I move that the transfers of staff as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sidnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
I move that the employment of Jeannie Wall as Associate Principal, 11 months at Washington Middle School, contingent upon pre-employment requirements, effective August 15, 2018, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sidnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
Jeannie is here. Welcome home. I move that the employment of staff as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sidnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker? Aye.
Carried 6-0.
And that concludes the action items.
All right. And at this point, we will begin interviewing our board member candidates. We have seven candidates to interview. One will be by the telephone, our last one. The other six will be in person. And at this point, if there's anyone who would like to speak on behalf of the candidates, I would allow some public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, then we will call in our first candidate.
There's, in your folders, there's a list of questions for each candidate.
Do you want to take them out?
Everybody have them?
Hello. And you go by Jake, is that right?
I do the line.
All right. We have five questions to ask you in about 30 minutes. A lot of your interviews, so just keep that in mind as you answer the questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
And I will be asking all of the, all five of the questions, but other board members may pop in with some, you know, have you elaborate on some things or ask some other questions.
Sure, awesome, thank you.
Maybe we can introduce ourselves to Jake.
Oh, okay, sure.
Sure.
Andrew Becker.
Hi, Jake, I'm Ed Dorf.
Hi, Ed.
Laura McCoy.
Brenda Warren.
Hi.
Katie Maloney.
Hi.
Rhonda Sidnikow.
Hello.
And I went through this, so I know what that feels like.
Okay, all right, well, we'll see.
So, the first question is, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
Well, first and foremost, I would like to be a member of the school board. First thing that comes to mind is my daughter Lucy, who is currently a fifth grader at Webster Elementary. She's going to be going into fifth grade this year. For me, her education and development in the Green Bay School District has been something that I've been very proud of, and I've been really looking for a reason to also get involved, not just in her education, but I think in education of the community as a whole. I'm a son of an educator. My mother was a K-12 choir teacher, so I was raised in the public school district, and it became a very core part of my upbringing, and something that I think I valued throughout my entire life. And that's ultimately what has interested me first and foremost. But also, for the last eight years, I have been a public employee with the state of Wisconsin. I have worked for the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation as, in two different positions, as a Consumer Case Coordinator for the first seven years of my, seven and a half years of my tenure, and then this last year I've changed positions within the organization. My specific division works with consumers with disabilities that are looking for employment. And one of the biggest sections that we actually do are cater to students with disabilities that are still in high school. We're one of the divisions that has a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Public Instruction to make sure that our services are there to also assist students with disabilities as it relates to their schoolwork, as well as their transition to the post-secondary and/or work world after they are done. This position has really helped me, I think, become a great public steward, and I've, working in the public sector for the last number of years, I've always wanted to look for other opportunities to better our community and look for other opportunities. And so that's why I'm interested in the Green Bay Area Public School District. I think that the work that I have done with transition students in my organization, whether it be from our rural communities or even our more, as we say, urban communities here in the Green Bay area, I think I'm looking for something more to get involved with. So I think that that's kind of what I hope to bring to the school board, and I think that for myself, as a person, I'm looking to get in more involved in general. And I think that being a member of the school board and being a member for the students that I'm serving, the families that are in the area, and also the professionals in our district that are there as teachers, administrators, and staff members, they are also important. And it's something that I saw in my mother growing up. So that's ultimately what I'm hoping to bring and what I hope that I can work towards.
What's your current position now?
My current position now is Financial Specialist Senior with the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, which is kind of a classification and switch to it. So it's a financial specialist is the actual title.
What are your top three priorities for the Green Bay Area Public School District?
Some of the things that I would really want to continue is definitely more work with students with disabilities, because the fact that when, with our work that we have done in my division, I've seen that there is always a need for more assistance for students with all types of disabilities, whether it be sensory, mental illness, or, you know, cognitive disabilities. I think that that's one of the things that my work with DVR has really made a priority for myself, and I think that's something that could always be better funded and/or have better opportunities. Whether it be, I have a large background also in assistive technology with my division, so I have worked to not only provide training and things for consumers related to the vocational development, but also assistive technology and how it relates to education, employment, and things like that. So I think that that's something too that I have kind of come into and has kind of become a priority for that there. Also, I think I would go out saying that the arts is something that I've always been really a strong component of, being a son of a choir teacher, and also with my daughter being in the arts program at Webster Elementary since she started when she was in kindergarten. So I believe that that program has enriched her development and her ability to not only engage with the art program, but I think engage across all of her co-curricular activities and education. And I think that's something that is very important and very integral to myself and my wife's, development of our daughter and what we see, and something I think that could be really good there. And also, I think I wouldn't go without saying the fact that safety is obviously one of the biggest concerns for all family members and all students across the nation, especially with discussions of it throughout the last couple of years. And I think that if you really look at it from a broad-based ideal, there's a lot of ways that you can really see different solutions to be able to look at that, and something that I think can always be at the forefront of our discussions when it comes to working with families, working with our districts, working with our teachers, and the Ministry of Staff. So I think those are three things that I really would value and look at and learn more about.
Describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administrator's role in the district.
Well, I know that...
I should say administration's role.
Administration's role, okay, thank you. For me, like I said, I'm a virtual novice when it comes to understanding, but for me, I know that the, the school board's role is to be there as a, as an outreach for our communities, so then that way they are there to listen to the families and the students to be able to understand what issues that they are seeing across the school district to make sure that they can then be able to discuss those in an open manner, so that the school board itself can bring up policy and implement and change different things so that it can benefit and better our, not only our students, but also the administration as a whole for there. So, for me, I think you look at the school board as someone that are there to prop up and support the school, but also hear all aspects be very across the board when it comes to working with our communities and be able to implement that policies from there.
And then the administration's role, did you want to go into that a little bit?
So the administration's role, obviously, they are there to develop and make sure that they are creating an environment that is good for the students and the teachers and be, you know, involved with implementing policies that is coming from the Department of Public Instruction and making sure that they are catering to the communities that they're working with there. And it's just making sure that they are not only being student-focused in what they're doing, but also understanding, working with their staff to be developmental when they're working with the teachers, but also the other staff members in county, in the community, excuse me.
As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
One of the things that I want, would do first is you would be going to the constituents of which I serve, is that I would go to the schools and go into the areas and communities that I would serve and listening to the families, listening to their concerns and what they are seeing and what they, and having a very fruitful conversation, because I think that that's something that I would love to do more because of the fact that if I'm working as a public employee, you only work in so much capacity to serve the policies and things that I have, but as a school board member, I think I would want to get involved with my community even more than I already am currently. And for me, I, you know, the guiding light that I have been given from my daughter and what she is seeing, and I think that it's, also being a son of an educator, you want to make sure that you are not only hearing from the families, you're hearing from the teachers, you're hearing from the students, so then that way you can identify and determine what types of things, concerns, and things that are out there that you need to, that. I think that creating a grassroots community to really just discuss and see what concerns there are in our community and just go into those different sections. And it's, I think too, because of that, I have a lot more I would need to learn about the greater Green Bay area. I've lived here for most of my adult life. I feel like I have been a resident for, you know, a long time, but I don't always feel like I know as much as I should. I mean, I specifically serve a certain population of our consumers, but I always know that there are other sections of the community that I haven't visited and that I would need to reach out to more. And I think that that's something that, as a school board member and as a member of this community, I would seek to do more and really make it a part of the core of my mission and who I am serving.
Then if you could, please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated, there's a long list, so I'll repeat the question if you want, of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member school board.
If I could have you repeat that, that would be great.
All right. Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member board.
All right. I think I'm actually going to be addressing these all one at a time, and I think I'll jump out of order here a little bit there.
Yeah, that's fine.
But the first I would like to discuss is leadership skills. I think the fact that the biggest benefit that I've had from the position I'm in currently is the idea of teaming, and the fact that that is actually something that we have taken to not only be something that is within a specific board or a group, but also on a micro level and a macro level. And I think that I have done what I can in my position to be a member of many teams and be a leader on these teams from a variety of different ways. I have worked on statewide work groups as well as inter-office work groups, as well as my district, which I am a member of as an employee. I've led and developed policy for my division when it comes to implementing policy for very specific programs, and also worked to provide the training and developing the training materials for, whether it is outreach to other community members or conferences, or also just training inter-departmental staff just on different policies. So I think I've taken a number of different leadership opportunities to not only be a member of a team, but also lead different projects, so then that way that we are working towards a common goal, which is be in consumer-focused, but also be able to train our staff and create opportunities for them. I think with working styles, one of the things that my position has really helped me develop a lot is the fact that understanding and developing different styles as relates to learning abilities and being able to explain and information to consumers who may have a cognitive disability or are more, needing more clarification because it's complex policies. So you always have to be very adaptable to be able to figure out what type of working style and/or, from a customer service base, making sure that you are open to the situation, be able to explain a number of different things, being focused on, be able to apply policy to everyday activities and things like that. I think that that's something I've developed a lot over the years because of the number of different consumers I've served and the number of different people that I have worked with in a wide variety of inter-office and also in the community. With communication styles, I think that works into it as well, because of the fact that when you are trying to explain a lot of different things, you have to understand what's going to be the best suited for that. And I think for me, I'm very much more of an auditory person, so then if someone is more of a visual person or is more of a written style, is just adapting to that, and I think I've been very adaptable and I've gone across all of the number of different styles there. And decision-making skills, I think, for me, my daily basis is making sure that I, in order to do my job, decision-making skills have to include being able to understand the policy of which I am working from and then be able to decide whether or not I'm going to be implementing, whether it's paying for certain services within my financial position, or whether or not it is helping consumers work through their different parts of their vocational plans. It's, not only is it creating a relationship together, but it's also providing informed choice to the people that you're working with of the information that I have and making sure that we can, they can understand where things are coming from and also how to work from there. And I think for me, too, that that's impacted just on how I work with my staff and the different decisions that we would have to make from there.
That's all the questions we have. I'll open it up to other questions from board members. Go ahead.
Can you give me a couple examples of some things that you think our district does well?
Well, I think that one of the things I've really enjoyed is that the ability that there are a number of different schools, different competencies. And I think that the district's ability to understand that all learners are not going to succeed well in every, whether it's an art school or a trade school, or looking at a number of different ways in which they can specify or have different competencies. I think that is something, when my wife and I were looking at different schools, that was one of the things that we considered. And I see, when you look at the flyers for the school, as they are continuing to look at that and add different specialties for, for this middle school or for the different high schools, I think that that's something, especially with the way in which my daughter's generation is developing, that that is going to make our community more successful and I think our district more open to bringing in new students and new families. And I think that that's something that is, if you continue to add that in, I think can only be good for everyone involved. And I think for me, that's, that was the biggest draw, and I think that that's the thing that we have really benefited from most with my family. And also, I, you know, I think that this district's ability over the last number of years to hear and discuss issues that are concerning and being honest and transparent about those different things is something that can obviously always need to be worked on, but is something that should be at the forefront of that. As a public employee, that's something that I try to make sure is one of the core competencies of what my job is as well, and I think it's something that you really want to work towards and continue moving forward.
Thank you. And on the flip side of that, what, what areas do you feel the district should work more on? You've talked a few, you've mentioned some of that in your previous questions, but if you have anything else you'd like to mention?
Well, I mean, obviously, I think the communication is always going to be one of the things that you would want to work on more, but I think that that's something that's not a, you know, something that is good or bad, it's something that you're always going to be working on, and I think you're going to be striving towards, and I think that's something that, as a whole, I think is becoming more prevalent and easy to discuss in an open manner, and it's something that I think can always be there too. And I think, like I said, for me, when I've worked a lot of different places in the past is targeting at-risk populations and making sure that the students in our communities who are struggling, who are looking for extra assistance, things like that. One of, two of the core things that started me down a path of public service was when I was in college here at University of Wisconsin-Green Bay. I worked with Cindy Shepherd, who had started the Future Phoenix Program, and I was very fortunate to be in that process early when I was in college, and the work with at-risk kids and being, you know, making sure that there are some programs that can really assist them, I think was something that really drove me towards a life of public service and something that I really wanted to do. I was able to develop a little bit of training back then, but something that I would love to revisit and make sure is kind of part of the core of that too. And actually, when I was, finished grad school and I was briefly unemployed, I moved back to my hometown, and I did another work with at-risk youth. And I think it's something, especially as we learn more and there's more education, we just had a seminar and a discussion with my group about trauma and forced care, and just making sure, you know, how that impacts education and how that can impact development for our students. And it's something that you can always, you know, look at and discuss and making sure that you can always serve. And I think too, one of the things that I hear most often from my daughter is when she's at school and she hears someone that is using language that could be hurtful to other students and how that makes her just, she wants to be more inclusive of her classmates and really wants to make sure that they are involved in the process and that she can reach out to the teachers and be able to help them with things. I think that, you know, creating inclusive language, inclusive communities, is something that Lucy has really put upon me to be better at as well, and I think it's something that I, you know, you think about more than, you know, I have in the past number of years, and I think it's something that I will continue, no matter what department or area I would work in.
Rhonda?
What do you believe sets you apart from other people that we're considering? What is something that you definitely want us to remember about you, because there's seven candidates? What is something that you definitely want us to, you know, to write down, to note, something that definitely, I guess, in a sense, brands you?
One of the things that I have always strived to be is, I try to soak up as much information as I can. As, from when I was young to myself as an adult, I've always strived on information, education, training, whether it is a study from a medical journal or psychological journal or facts that don't have any correlation to anything. I think that my, my role and something that is a strength for me is that ability to want to constantly research and make sure that I can get to more answers, and if I can't get to those answers, my ability, I love to work with other people. I love to team, I love to make sure I can find other resources. I think it's that, being able to reach out to other resources and people who know more than I do has made me a better professional and made me, I just learned more, and I think it's something that I've gained stronger, you know, knowledge from.
Okay. Well, Jake, I already know I want to on my trivia team.
Okay. I'll do my best. I'm actually really good at trivia, I love it.
All right. Wondering, your work with DVR and the good things that DVR has done with our district, most recently the, the certification program for the detailing students?
Yes, with East High, yes.
Right, yes. Is there any potential conflict of interest if you were to be a board member and continue your work at the DVR?
Right now, I currently really don't serve with my reclassification. I serve mostly Sheboygan County with all of my consumers that I work with. So I, I used to work more specifically with Green Bay, but now I actually work more with Sheboygan County as my consumer's there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Can you share your opinion about tax dollars being spent on private charter schools?
Obviously, when it comes to anything related to fiscal spending, there is a lot of different ways that you have to look at it. I think that my primary role is, is now, I have to, my primary concern is on making sure that I have proper documentation and that, so my mindset is understanding that policy is followed. With, with public funding or dollars for private schools, I think, for me, I would want to gather as much information as possible, obviously, what is the school, what the accountability of the school is, what are they going to be providing, just the different assessments and ramifications of that. So it's, for me, it's, I, I need to know more, and I need to really examine it from a larger fiscal background, because for me, I have very set rules in which I follow, and so I think that's something I have to look into more.
In the last couple minutes, is there anything you would like to leave us with?
Just one quick question that I always ask, like, what are some of the core competencies or values or skills that would make someone a successful school board member? Or what are the things that the person can bring into a successful or, you know, into the school board?
I think one of the things that you mentioned is, you know, learning a lot. I think there's a lot to our district in terms of the complexity and what happens and the policies we have, the rules we live under, the state legislation, all of that kind of thing. And so I think that's one thing, just, you know, open mind to coming in and just learning as much as you can about the district.
I would second that. I've been, I'm somewhat new to the board and I don't have an education background, so it's been quite a journey to learn about our district, and it's really important to be able to pull in a lot of information.
And then I think the ability to pull in information, but then, you know, asking questions and, and not only to, not only questions for your own learning, but questions for, you know, to kind of challenge some of what we do and, because we're all about continuous improvement and looking, like you said, looking for new ways of doing things and things like that, so I think those, that's important. you know, to kind of challenge some of what we do and because we're all about continuous improvement and looking, like you said, looking for new ways of doing things and things like that. So I think those, that's important also.
Awesome.
I would say, I think you would be well appreciated by your constituents if you did what you said you were interested in doing, which is having fruitful conversations and getting involved in the community and hearing from families and teachers and grassroots. I think anytime anybody says the word grassroots, they refer to the people. And I think that that's definitely something that would make you a successful board member.
Thing I would add, Jake, is remembering to never lose sight of what the purpose of a school board is, the focus of the school board. And it's really, you know, it is listed in statute, but I mean, bottom line is it's about student learning. It's about taking care of the kids in the district. And, you know, you do have to, as Rhonda alluded to, pay attention to what's coming from the various constituencies. But the bottom line is what's best for kids. That's, might sound trite, but really, that's really what the bottom line is.
I hear you. That's awesome.
All right. Well, we thank you very much for your time.
Awesome. I thank you all so much for having me.
We'll let you know probably tomorrow.
Okay.
Our decision.
Awesome.
Because it'll be on the late side tonight before we finish.
Okay. I thank you so much for having me today. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready?
We're ready.
Yep.
Hi, Dawn.
Hi.
aside for your interview.
Okay.
We have five standard questions that will be asked of all candidates. And then other board members will, I'm going to ask all five of those questions. And then other board members may have other questions they want to ask after that.
All right.
And we'll start with Andrew and introduce ourselves quickly.
Andrew Becker.
Ed Dorff.
Laura McCollum.
Brenda Warren.
Katie Maloney.
Rhonda Sitnickow.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Dawn Smith.
So if you could start off by just telling us why you want to be appointed to the school board and what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
My youngest daughter graduated from West in May. My kids have attended Green Bay Public Schools. They started out at parochial school when my oldest daughter was in third grade and my youngest was in first. We switched them to Lincoln, school choice to Lincoln. Elmore was our home school. Lincoln was a Sage and Title I school. So we school choice them to Lincoln. It was a horse apiece, two blocks either way. And it was absolutely the best decision we made. We have, like I said, they went to a Sage school. My oldest daughter was behind in math. She utilized Title I. She had the same third and fifth grade teacher. Her fifth grade teacher said she was a different kid. My kids went to Franklin. They both participated in advanced math in Franklin. When they got to West, my oldest did the IB diploma program. My youngest did two IB certificate classes. She did two CEP classes. She did youth options. We have had a really, really positive experience at Green Bay Public Schools. I watched your meeting when you went through and you picked your candidates. And I know you have a lot of very, very good candidates. Personally, know John Yankee, and he is a phenomenal man. I absolutely love him. We were on PTO together at Lincoln. So I put myself out there. I didn't know who else applied. I put myself out there as an option for you. And if you think that I am the best fit and I round out your board and what you're looking for, then I made myself available. And what I bring, I'm a business system analyst at NWTC. So my job is to bring people together to solve problems. I bring people from all over the college together. We meet as teams. We look at return on investment. We go through, we process map, we do analysis of what issues are. We collaborate until we come up with the best solution. And that's what I bring. I build strong relationships and I am a collaborator.
What are your three top priorities for the Green Bay Area Public School District?
Three top priorities? There are, I had a really, really great experience in Green Bay Public Schools, but I think there are a lot of opportunities. I've sat in PTO meetings where my husband and I and another couple were the only people there. We were at a school safety meeting that was held last spring and there were 10, what's that with Katie? There were 10 people, probably 10 parents that were there. And we were talking school safety. We were, my husband and I were both in PTO at Lincoln and at Franklin. And I, I really think education is a partnership between schools and families. And one thing I would like to see is really building that partnership. Now, if I knew how to do that and I knew how to fill up our PTO meetings, I wouldn't have been sitting at Franklin and had two other parents there. But I do believe that there are some schools, you know, Lincoln had a really successful PTO. I think there are ways that we can work on improving that. I look at the Hall Community Center, you know, there's, there's a bunch of different ways that we can work on bringing parents into the schools and really increasing that engagement. I'm looking because I made lots of notes. You know, school violence. I know you have a new grant that's coming up. We participated in that, the Alice training that they presented. My husband was at the roundtable. I was at a COV meeting. I wasn't able to attend that. I would like to see, I would like to see our schools become safer. I know there has been talk between the county about making public health services more available to our schools and working on that collaboration. I think that is a step in that right direction. I know we had talked about when we were at that meeting, one of the things they do, I work at NWTC, and one of the things they do is securing the rooms from the inside. One of the things I talked about was you could take a belt off and you could tie it to, you know, tie it to a doorknob. You know, what are the, there are tools and things that can be used within the classrooms to secure classrooms and to really look at what those options are. You know, and one of the other things that I mentioned in my letter, and this is another one, none of these problems are easy to solve. I know you're all here because you want to fix these problems, is really that racial discrepancy between staff and students. And I say this because it's a problem that we have at NWTC, too. How do we help our staff and our faculty to look more like our student body? Once again, I don't have the answers. There's all kinds of smart people that have things out there. You know, they talk about, you know, growing your programs, growing your own programs. One of the things I think about when I look at people that are teachers, and I know quite a few teachers, they had really, really positive school experiences. Teachers, I think, become teachers because they want to go back to school. And how do we give our students of color that kind of experience that they want to come back and go into being teachers? And there are, there are lots of things. I mean, when you look at poverty, you look at hunger. Another really big thing for me is bullying and how we teach empathy in our schools. You know, I just read a really great article about schools in Denmark. And I realize schools in Denmark and schools in Green Bay are very, very different. But they have empathy classes. And they started a really, they start in kindergarten. And once a week, they have an empathy class. And they teach kids how they talk about their problems and how they are respectful with one another. So those are some of the things I think we could do better.
All right. If you could, describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
The school board provide, the school board is elected as a go-between between the public and the administration. The administration provides you guys with the information that you need to make responsible decisions on how we utilize our taxpayer dollars. I don't think, you all have, I'm sure, your different areas of expertise. I don't know that any of you are experts in everything that the administration presents to you and all the decisions you as a board make. It's a partnership. But I think the board's decision is to ensure that there is transparency to the public and that as a school district, we are being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And we are making the right decisions for our students, which then benefits the public.
As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
Specifically? What, well, and that's, that's interesting. How would I be an advocate for this? Well, I like to think I'm already an advocate for Green Bay Public Schools because I do share my enthusiasm and the really great experience we've had. I, I have spent a lot of time over the course of my children's education in the classrooms. And one of the things that appeals to me about the school board is having that opportunity to still interact with the schools and be a part of the schools. I've been a PTO member for years. I like the idea of going in and participating in PTO meetings and being available. I, you know, I'm a big fan of the IB program. I don't think we sell the IB program as well as we could. I think IB has the potential to bring kids from other districts, other districts, I know kids from other districts. We had two kids this year, one who came from Nina to do the IB diploma program. You know, I think we could do a much better job of selling the IB program. I, Green Bay Public Schools have a lot to offer. There are a lot of opportunities for our students. And I, I think just vocalizing that, sharing that. But the thing that I most look forward to would be actually being able to interact with parents, interact with teachers, and interact with students.
Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working, a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member school board. And I can repeat that if you want.
No, I got you.
Okay.
I'm going to give you an example. So I've, I worked at Schneider for 22 years. I came to NWTC last year. I'm a business analyst. Like I said, I support our finance, college advancement, which is recruitment and marketing. And I also support our Learning Solutions Group. I came in in the middle of a project with our finance team. They had been working on this project for a while, kind of came in on the middle. They were moving forward with it. I took over, worked on it for a couple of months, got to a point when what they were trying to do could not possibly be done. So I had to bring everybody together. It was a group of managers because, you know, people, when they work on projects, they bring a bunch of managers together as opposed to not bringing in the people that actually do the work and understand what's going on. So we bring a bunch of managers together and I had to sit down and say, okay, what you're trying to do, what you've been trying to do for the past three years, because the project's been out there for three years, is not going to work and we are going to start over. And we sat down and I brought the right people into the room, meaning the people that were actually doing the work. We looked at what that process was. So it was me and one of my IT developers. We pulled it up. I said, show me what you're doing now. And we ended up going through and figuring out that what had started out as hundreds of hours of customization was like 20 hours of tweaking some defaults that we had in the system. But the person that did the work had been doing the work that way for 10 years. So she never questioned why that default was set the way it was because that's just how she did her job. So I came in, and it's kind of an advantage. I was at Schneider where I knew the system inside and out, so I didn't ask the questions. But I came in and I didn't understand the system. And I asked the stupid questions like, well, why do you, why is that receipt status set to required? And she's like, I don't know. It's always set to required. Well, you know what? If we take 30 seconds, have a developer flip it to do not, I've just saved you 10 hours a month because you don't have to receive everything. And we went through that process by asking those questions. Okay, so this is how you've always done it, but why do you do it that way? And we ended up, my developer says, he's had more meetings on this for the least amount of development he's ever done on a project. Because it was starting over and it was asking why we did things. And when people came back and said, well, that's just how we always did it, it's pushing back and saying, why do we always do that? And I think that is, I think that happens with everything. I mean, I saw that at Schneider, too. We get comfortable with what we do. And regardless of who you bring on, you're going to have somebody new. And I know, you know, you have a new member this time. And they, you know, they're going to ask questions. And that's a good thing because, because we've done certain things a certain way for the past 10 years does not mean it's necessarily the best way to do things moving forward. So I did this project, you know, we got done in six months, what it took them three years to do. We will actually be presenting on it at a conference in October on what happens when you step back and you question and, you know, look at what that is. Did that answer your question? I mean, is it that example asking answer your question?
No, that, that answers the question, from my perspective, anyway. All right. At this point, I'll open it up for other board members to ask any questions.
How do you feel about tax dollars being spent on private charter schools?
I don't like it. And I, and I say that, I went to, I went to private school. And this was something, I went to private school and my parents went to private school. And I remember my mom, I remember my mom talking to me about this. And she said, we choose to send you to private school, but we still support our public schools. And my parents were okay with that. It is important for society that we have strong public schools. I, I think there is, poverty and education go hand in hand, right? Education solves poverty. And as we give more and more of our public school dollars to private charter schools, to vouchers, we are depleting the resources for our public schools and we are making it harder to break that cycle of poverty. I just, public schools, I think, are the key to, I'm not going to say solving the poverty issue because I don't know that we ever are, but they are a key factor. My brother, my brother has taught in the district. He was a principal at Nicolay. And he said, you know, and we've talked about it, you know, Norway, Scandinavian countries have phenomenal schools, you know, they have the best test results. And we've talked about it. And where that's different, and he said, Dawn, those kids in Norway don't ever go to school hungry. And that makes a difference in a student's ability to learn. You know, Scandinavian, you know, Norway has great schools. Norway doesn't have the diversity that we have in our schools. And that presents a great thing. I made a choice to send my kids to the schools I did. And I think they got a better education because they went to culturally diverse schools. Not only do they graduate from their schools and, you know, they can compete with anyone because of the great education they got, but what they learn by going to culturally diverse schools is something that they can't get elsewhere. And, you know, regardless of where you choose to send your schools, having strong public schools as an option is essential to our society.
Rhonda?
You had mentioned for question three, that you believe that the board needs to ensure that there's transparency to the public. Can you give an example of what you would do to make sure that that was happening?
That's a, you know, that's a really interesting question. And, you know, I was, we were speaking about this while I was waiting. And overall, and I think all elected officials, it's a really, really transitional time. I was reading an article that was, I think yesterday was published in the Press Gazette about county board executives and their emails, their official emails. And they were looking at the last time they opened their emails. And somebody, it was like 2015. And they were talking about, they were talking about county executives who use Gmail and who use Yahoo and the challenges that presents with open records. And, you know, I, I watch Facebook and I see what people are saying. And I've seen people trying to engage elected officials on Facebook. And I understand that it presents a really, really interesting challenge because we want the public to be engaged in our politics. And I think that's essential. I think it's essential to our democracy. But we do have, there are laws around open records and how we do that. I know that there are elected officials who have Facebook pages, which I think are controllable. I know it's frowned upon, but, you know, you can control your own Facebook page. You know, elected officials engaging in You know, elected officials engaging in conversations on other people's pages, that's harder. Because if somebody makes an open records request on something that you said on somebody else's page, you have to be able to provide that information. Ideally, I would like to make a website to make things available. I know the legal answer right now is I would only use my Board of Education email. I will tell you that long-term, I don't think, I, I think elected officials in general are going to have to figure out how we reconcile open records and social media. It's, I think it's inevitable. We have to figure out how we push information to the public. Yep.
So your answer to that would be that you would create a website? That's how you can see yourself being more transparent to the constituency?
That would be my plan. And I would use my Board of Ed email to communicate. But I really think, I mean, as things change, it, it would have to be something that I have control over. You know, I, I understand open records. And it would have to be something that if somebody made an open records request, I would be able to pull all my communication and data.
Any other questions?
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Hello.
Dan.
Hey, Dan.
Good to be here.
So we've allotted 30 minutes for your interview. We have, I have five questions that we've asked, we'll ask all candidates. And then other board members may have some other questions to ask as well. And I, do you know all of us at the table? Let me go around. Why don't we just introduce ourselves and make sure?
Andrew Becker.
Ed Dorff.
Laura McCoy.
Brenda Warren.
Katie Maloney.
Rhonda Sitnikow.
It's good to meet all of you.
All right, so if you could start out and tell us why you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
My parents instilled in me, in our entire family, the importance of education. I'm the son of a welder and a nurse. They got to their vocations by experience in technical school. But they always gave us a passion and desire for seeking out education. And we did. There's six kids and nine degrees between us. And there was, I have a, you know, a brother who's a master electrician. And I have an engineering, engineering degree. But I also went to a trade and technical school. So I've seen a lot of different things. I've seen education, everything. Either had students in virtual or in class. I've had and done the same myself. I've had private education and public education, both for myself and my children. So I've, I've seen education upside down and left and right. And because of this passion for it, I really wanted to make a difference. And as you know, you don't sit on this board because of the great money that they pay you. You're here because you want to make a difference, that you want to perpetuate public education and keep the tradition of, of Green Bay Public Schools going ahead. It's one of the last cements, you know, with the loss of, of the draft. It's one of the last cements in our democracy that brings everyone together from, you know, doctors and lawyers, childrens, to homeless kids and everyone in between. And because of that, it's one of the things that makes this town and this county, in this world, a better place to live. It's one place where you go and you meet people that are different from you and you learn from them. The teachers at the front of the classroom are very important, but so is the student sitting next to you. So I'm, I'm really passionate about it. It's a topic at our dinner table. It's something we do because we feel really strongly about it. And I, I'm, was a member of the task force for that same reason. I bring a passion. But also, I think, as you may have seen from the task force, and I think you wanted why, but also what do I bring? I, I like, I like to problem solve. I mean, my undergrad is in engineering. And I'm a son of a welder who loved to do different things. And I'm trying to pass on to my children and the greater community. I mean, that's what public education is all about. It's really about how do we, as a society, give our citizens the tools to problem solve so they can, you know, provide for their children, get self-satisfaction, and make for a better community. And I really feel like, you know, that public education is one of those things that does that quite well, not perfectly. And we've got lots of challenges. And for those challenges, why I could help with them is because of that same background. Like I say, I went to a trade and tech school. I took some time off and was a draftsman. So I worked after high school. I went on to get an engineering degree from Marquette in 87. I worked at Motorola in radio and Motorola Cellular for six years, designing, you know, RF front ends for digital circuitry. We, my wife's job brought us up here. I decided, and we, we and she, the two of us decided that I would stay home and she would work. It made the most sense for us. So I have, I'm a stay-at-home dad. I bring an unconventional look at things. I have to. I mean, it's still an unconventional role in our society. So sometimes I did what everyone didn't. Sometimes I had to reinvent it because, you know, you can't take your daughter in, in the women's room when she's a little girl. You figure it out. And I would bring, you know, and that's just one small example. But another good example is I served on Habitat for Humanity 20 years ago before my oldest daughter was born. Saw the, what the Manitowoc Habitat was doing. They removed nine houses to provide families with affordable housing. I said to myself, "Why can't we do that in Green Bay?" And brought it to the board. At the time, St. Vincent was tearing down five homes and more. But five homes that were eligible and worthy of moving. And I brought it to the board along with mentions of the excitement in the community, the backing by those with financial means. And just the ability to motivate volunteers. It led to a lot of different skills. I had to go before the neighborhood and convince people that this was good or at least a positive change. I had to go before governmental bodies and lobby for a code change. I had to convince people who had truth on both sides of the issue that maybe it was a positive change. And then it did pass. It was a great success because companies could get behind it and Habitat got volunteers. But more importantly, there was also follow-up on my part. You know, I shook hands and set hold of a gentleman who was defeated because his side didn't prevail. So it's not just about getting the, the problem. It's also about making sure that relationship is preserved when you solve the problem. I listen. As you saw in the task force, for those of you who were there, collaboration is one of my desires and strengths. I listen because I feel I have good ideas, but, and bring it to the table. But I listen because I think they can get better by listening to those around me. As I mentioned, I'm a problem solver and passionate and different skills like that. I also feel like I have a depth that, and a perspective that's unusual because, you know, I'm, I also have a master's in theology from Saint Norbit. So I can tell you about RF circuitry, but also talk to you about, you know, what's the philosophical underpinnings of each of our human dignity. I bring a, you know, a unique perspective that I think can help the board in many different ways. And I also want to join and be here because I, I seek to learn from you and see what works and what doesn't work. But hopefully I can also bring a new spin on things and new ideas. I'm an informational junkie, so I will go out and, and seek what's succeeding elsewhere and what we might be able to bring here and work. I don't feel the need to invent the wheel if it's, if it's rolling really good somewhere else.
All right. What are your three top priorities for the Green Bay area public school district?
I would say, based on some of my life experiences, our children have all either attended or are attending East High. Green Bay has the fourth largest minority population, if my numbers are right, in the state. It's one of its unique challenges. But I also, and one of the things I personally pushed for and got in the document was, we have to see that not as a liability. It is a challenge, but it is also one of our greatest gifts. You know, that diversity is what the real world is, is like. It prepares you for a world that is much more diverse than Green Bay happens to be, the larger urban area. I'm only speaking of that, you know. That minority population is one of our gifts. It's not just a challenge. And I, I thought that was a fundamental movement forward because so many people don't accept that. I, having kids at East, actually see it as a really great positive. It gives my children perspective that, you know, can't be obtained in other schools outside of GBAPS. You know, my, my daughter comes home with a story that says, you know, "The kid next to me is getting deported, possibly." Or, I mean, it gives you a perspective on your problems and it makes you think about what's really important in, in life. And I think that was a fundamental shift for, for the document, that it's not a liability, but it's actually a strength and we have to start treating it as such. So that would be one of the challenges and also one of the things I would push forward. The other thing, I think, you know, funding is out there. That's obviously a state-level thing, but I think it's important to think about and dwell on. What it means at a local level is being very responsible with each and every dollar, making sure it's spent well and wisely. I also think because of the growing divide in our community, I think it's important to bring all stakeholders as well as we can to the table and talk to them and seek their inputs. We may not be able to honor all stakeholders, but we'll listen and we'll put it in there and see where it goes. I think those three things are really important. Minor things, I think, as I said on the task force, gifted education is one of the things we're number one in the state, K to eight, Da Vinci School. I don't, my children have personally benefited from that. My two older ones, it was not available. We pulled that second born out of school because he was bored silly. We, he would order things from UPS with his own money back when Amazon just started. And we figured it out a couple of years later. It was because he was so bored in school, he wanted something to look forward to. So his way of solving it, fast forward to number three and four. Number four actually spent significant time, Peter, at Da Vinci. They do gifted education the best that I've seen anywhere. And we've done a lot of different things. I've mentioned about looking at, we've done virtual school, we've done online school. We've done, you know, exclusively private schools. But we're back at East because it brings this whole package. I don't, you know, it's, it's, one of the things about Green Bay is sometimes, you know, the, I guess that fourth thing would be perception. I'm, we looted that into the document also. I've seen a lot of great things happen in Green Bay Public Schools. We need to get that story out there. And I've personally done it in the neighborhood and I'm doing it here now. And I tried to do that through the task force. It's some really great stuff going on and we need to get it out. We need to change that perception. Let's take, and those perceptions put us on an unlevel playing field at some level. So why don't we go to those places where we're really, really strong? One of those is gifted education. But really tied in why that's so good in, in the district is because we do individualized education so well. We do one end, is what I always say, and I've said it to Ed, because he was principal there when we were at East. We do this side of the bell curve really well, which means you can meet my students over here at this end of the bell curve really well. We have to do that more and get that out. So that, and what that done is, it keeps families in district that would otherwise go elsewhere. That is, that is actually, middle-class families is the strongest educational reform you can have in a school. There's a report that we cited in that paper that talked about that. The more middle-class families you have in there, they don't have to deal with the two jobs parenting. They don't have to deal with, you know, like I said, somebody maybe possibly being deported. That brings social capital to a school. And if we can keep more families there in GBAPS, it helps everyone. But it's not just a one-way street. As I've said before, our, those middle-class families get a perspective and that pair of jeans just doesn't matter as much when you've got a perspective of the kid next to you is facing much bigger problems. It, it's a two-way street. And I really feel like it's been great. And I'd like, I'd like to get that message out there about the district. We have something great here. Not that we're perfect. There's things we can change and we should change and keep improving continually. But we've got some great things going on. We have to build on those strengths. I'd like to see technology done that. I've, you know, we've had situations where an online class came to one of our students at Green Bay East and it was, I think that one end of the, or the other end, I forget if it was a student or teacher, had a little screen this big. And obviously that's, I think that's since been replaced, but we can't do that. We have to use technology. And that also fulcrums on our size. We are the biggest district in northeast Wisconsin. We have to fulcrum that. We have resources and great teachers teaching lots of different things. Why can't we bring that effectively to students across the whole district? And it has to really be superior to continue our mission too because Green Bay has a district of, has a history of good education of its students.
All right. Describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
I see the school board's role as oversight based on its, their inputs of their personal experience and, but also their inputs from the greater community. You know, you're elected officials, so you take the opinions of the electorate at the ballot box as well as the ones coming into your email and your phone. And you incorporate them into your decisions. You get informed from outside sources by reading. You know, your reading load is legendary. The, then you take those things and you're informed by the people in the administration who do this day in and day out. I mean, they have, they have the time. They have, you know, the support staff. You guys have limited time. They have full-time positions in many of them. And they're well-qualified and highly educated and highly experienced. So you incorporate their inputs with those other, you know, the electorate, your experience and your information and move ahead as a, as a body in a manner that's responsible to the district.
And then you, the administration's role in the district, you said a little bit about that.
Yeah, I, I see the administration's role as being, you know, carrying out what you have collaborated and eventually voted on for them to do. But also bringing back data from the classroom, situations that occur at schools, drawing on their outside resources from, you know, fellow professionals, conferences, other information to feed back to you and say, "Hey, you need to look at this." I mean, they're really kind of the people, you know, in the boots that do this every day. And they're an invaluable source of information and experience. And it really has to be a collaborative between the two. So you, you know, you work with them and hopefully it's a circle. You know, you feed your decisions in and they feed inputs back such that the two are working together for a better, you know, district and better performance. So I see it as highly collaborative, give and take, working together based on what the community feeds to both bodies.
Okay. And as a school, we've already said a little bit about this. But as a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
I've already been an advocate, so I'll just talk about some of that. One is recruiting people to Green Bay. We live in a choice state. So I'm, I'm out there telling people, you know, our kids have had a great experience. We've got one who just graduated from the University of Notre Dame. I have a second, the second-born son is at Ann Arbor. These are success stories that people don't associate unfortunately with Green Bay area high schools. I, you know, the dentist the other day said, "Oh, so your kids are at Notre Dame." No, they're not. And I'm really proud of it. And I gave her a little speech about the great things that go on in, in this district. The third-born son is a senior graduating from East. Last year, he was in China for six weeks with Nestle. He just came back from a six-weeks, it's called summer science program, studying in New Mexico with 36 other people, mostly nationals from other countries. And he did this because one of their things, besides selecting high-performing students across the world, it's to select students that may have come from a high-poverty school where you haven't had, you know, 52 different AP classes to choose from. So that may be part of the reason Joel got into that very selective program. I don't think people, you know, so I get out there and, like one neighbor, after I talked to them and they decided to go to East, I said, "You know, I hope you'll like it and you'll go out and evangelize like I do." There's really, there's great educational stuff that goes on, but yet there's great real-world stuff, you know, where it's, like I said, it's the entire bell curve, which is an experience you don't get. where it's, like I said, it's the entire bell curve, which is an experience you don't get in many other places in our society today.
All right, and then, um, the last question is, please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member school board.
I talked about the Habitat, which was a highly collaborative, uh, situation, where there's people with much, much more experience than I, uh, and I had to draw on that. And it, it was very instructive because, uh, it taught me, you know, being capable at things, sometimes you're slow to seek out other people's expertise. It's unfortunate, but it's, you know, we've talked about it, it's, you know, the bright trap, or the smart trap, whatever you want to call it. Um, but if you get capable at something, sometimes you're slow to reach out. Well, this, this taught me, I had done some construction, but it was amateur construction, and I had to reach out to professionals and, you know, rely on the architect. Uh, I had to collaborate with neighbors, you know, work with them, talk with them, dialogue with them to say, you know, this could be really good for the neighborhood. As I said, I also had to talk with the people that didn't agree with it and be respectful in the dialogue. Uh, you know, it was a really good microcosm of dealing in a democratic society where, you know, we talk about things, we discuss them, we vote on them, and then we move on. Um, and we review it to see if it goes on. Uh, I thought the, you know, the task force was a good example. I really tried to solicit actively inputs from many different members. One example was, um, there wasn't minority representation like I would have liked on it, just, and that's random. Um, you know, you receive a letter, how are you going to tell, nor should you be able to tell in a colorblind society. I went out and sat down, uh, with the pastor of a downtown church just to get his read on education from a minority viewpoint. Um, so, you know, there's, there's this, uh, and I, I really, I think what's so important, when I really tried to do, and I hope, uh, you saw it, was I really tried to listen. I think that's so important today because we've got so much screaming going on in the public arena that sometimes you just need to listen and hear people out. And I really tried to do it in a respectful manner, where, uh, the task force always heard, uh, different, uh, opinions, and sometimes particularly in the later meetings, I had to say, you know, excuse me, I, I need you to not cut that person off and let them finish so that we can hear all participants. Um, so collaboration, listening, uh, and then deciding and moving on. Sometimes, you know, there were some things I would like to see in that document that didn't make it, but you decide and you move on, and that's okay. That's part of the ugly beauty of democracy. I don't know if that answers the question for you.
Yeah, I think so. Um, at this point, I'll open it up to other board members to ask questions. Laura?
Um, how do you feel about tax dollars being spent on private charter schools?
I think the silver lining is it requires all players to look really hard at how well they're doing their job. Uh, will I come categorically down against it? Um, that's, we're in a state where I don't see that. You know, I could say that, but it wouldn't, uh, happen. I do, uh, not think that that money should be spent in a place that doesn't have the same requirements that, um, public schools do. I, I wouldn't want to hand my tax dollar over to someone and just say, you go run and spend it, and whatever results you get, you get. That's that, you know, very unlevel playing field that I was referring to earlier. Um, charter schools statistically do no better than public schools. Uh, I think it's one of those, uh, it's one of those arguments that is, people are so strongly about. I think we actually have to convince people why it should not happen before the vote actually occurs that makes it not happen. There's such a division in the society right now. Some people think it's a cat's meow. I do not like how it eliminates, uh, what I talked about, or the whole bell curve, uh, of education being in, in, in one place. That said, I'm really hard to come down, you know, I know, I know you feel probably differently, Laura, you come really hard against it. Um, but I, you know, I, I think if it makes us do our job better, as messy and ugly as it is, um, it's helpful. That said, I would, uh, uh, you know, church-state separation, um, where public dollars are going to support, um, you know, secular things. I have, I'm not sure of that set, and I'm a practicing Catholic, um, so I'm on both sides of that. That's, that's one thing I learned in my master's degree, is the best societies are the freest. It's not the ones that establish, uh, some view and impose it on everyone else.
Okay, so let's say you're appointed, okay? What is, one of the first things that you would want to see on an agenda for a discussion, um, at the board table?
Um, first I would listen and see what goes on there and try and, um, get the lay of the land, partly out of respect for your experience of all of you. Once I felt like I became, uh, more accustomed to the lay of the land, I would like, uh, as, I'd like to see, like, you know, using, uh, the things that we do really well in this district to, to get more people to, you know, stay K to twelve in this district. Um, I think, like I said, we do gifted education really well. Um, I would like to see that extended to a high school location. We've, you know, personally as parents been pushing for that. Um, some folks see it as elitism. I see it as serving the whole bell curve, that, that, you know, number-two son used to look forward to cutting his finger in fourth grade because it took him five minutes to get to the office if he moved slow enough, and five minutes back. That's not serving that child's needs, and those students are going to be, you know, the ones that do startups and drive job creation for our country. Those students, uh, do great things. I would like to see the district do that. I think there's some hesitancy on the district's part, um, because they get some pushback from parents. Um, well, if you've got that gifted program over here, what's my student over here? Well, if you pull some students out, study shows that actually new leaders rise up. It's not a zero-sum game. Your, your student may not be at that school, but there's new possibilities at your school if, quote-unquote, some leaders have left. Um, I'd like to see, like I said, really high-quality technical, uh, sharing of classes. Um, I've heard it talked about, but I've never heard it talked about as really high-quality. Um, that's, I think, essential to, you know, stretching that dollar, which is so... Uh, my, my kids have had some really good experiences with, with online schools. They've had some really awful, um, over-the-air, o- over-internet experiences too.
So it sounds like your first agenda, um, item for discussion would be related to, um, additional gifted programs in the district.
I think it's one thing...
Is that fair?
Uh, it's, it's something, it's prac, it's admitting and practicing what I already am preaching. Um, it's been really good for us. It's also something that has pulled outside money into the district. First year, DaVinci pulled in three hundred thousand dollars in outside district money. Um, and it's one of those things that we do really well, let's leverage our strengths. I'd also like to see, uh, what's, what's really that thing that's going on there? It's doing individualized education, which Green Bay area public schools do so well, and it's building on that. And I think it's just expanding one of our strengths. Uh, that, that'd be one place I'd start. Uh, I, I'd like to do technology. I'd also like to see, like I said, let's change the perception of the district. Some people don't see its strengths. Let's play those up, let's also not get defensive, or let people label a strength a liability. And that doesn't just mean to say it's not, things aren't, without, it's challenges.
Thank you. Andrew?
What are some things with that? You, you mentioned, I think in two different questions, that there are things you would have liked to see in the, maybe make it through-to-the-end report in the boundary committee and didn't. What were some, what were some areas that you had opinions that maybe differed from the committee, and your position represented a minority viewpoint, and how did you address that? Whether it was just, um, I'll just leave it there.
Um, one of the things, the deficits of DaVinci right now is it's, um, it's not mine, it doesn't, it's not enough plurality of people there. Um, that was one of the things I would have liked to see. One of the papers, um, showed that was highly volatile, but LaCrosse, uh, went to a, uh, situation where they tried to, uh, effectively get the whole district within, uh, certain minority, uh, or not minority, excuse me, economic. Uh, so if you have, you know, fif, let's say you have fifty percent, uh, in the district that, uh, of, uh, you know, free introduced lunch, seek out as a district to even that out over the whole district. Uh, LaCrosse did that, it's, it's very difficult. You need community support to do it. I would not try it without it. It'd have to be a grounds-up, uh, kind of thing. But what it does is it, it evens educational results. You get students, uh, learning, uh, you know, you don't get really high-poverty schools. Um, that was one thing that was, uh, dead on arrival, but it's got some really good, uh, outcomes. LaCrosse did it quite effectively and, um, but their situation may or may not be like ours. Wausau tried to do something like that, and it was, it was soundly, um, defeated by, uh, the electorate. Um, so that was one. Um, try to get the district, um, to be more, you know, homogeneous overall. It also, you know, gets, it, it plays on what's out there already, which is choice. Students, one of the things we did push was let students go where they want to, within reason, of course. Um, the other thing, um, that I thought was really a good recommendation, I, I, you know, I went, I went to a magnet high school in Milwaukee. I had some great experiences. It was one of the first successful integrated schools i- in, uh, Milwaukee and Wisconsin, from my understanding. Um, those, there was some great things that happened there. Early on, the task force was very much behind, um, strong options to pull, and I think it's, the word that was used was irresistible, but as the committee went on, it fell by the wayside. Um, I think there was some hesitancy that by saying, this is really strong in this area over here, this is not strong over there, and I didn't agree with that point, but it wasn't the sentiments of the committee, and so I went on with the wisdom of the committee. Those two things, uh, I think magnet schools, uh, DaVinci's a great example, where you've got this irresistible product that's pulling people into the district that might otherwise say, oh, I'm going to keep my kid in DePere, I'm going to keep my kid in Bayport. Um, I'd, I would like to see more of those. We've done some of it. We have to make those options just irresistible to people outside the district. It's good for us, it's good for the schools, it brings some really great things that go on in those schools.
So were these, were there, were these points that got voted on in committee?
Um, that was one thing about, uh, the task force. Um, the consultant, Pete Ross, very much wanted to have, uh, a non-Roberts Rules style of doing things. Um, and early on, he said that, and that's the way the committee went. So, it was kind of the sentiment, it was kind of by, uh, a, um, what's the right word, you know, by assent. And it's a, I, I would suggest to the board that maybe you do it differently later, because it's hard to move forward sometimes, or sometimes maybe things, uh, don't get advanced the way folks think they should. But, you know, it was what it was, and that was what the consultant thought. Uh, I would maybe push for more formal, uh, order in the future just to get things to flow through a task force like that in a way that... Hmm, one, one thing about that is you, sometimes the loudest people or the most talkative can prevail under that. There's a great book out there called Quiet that talks about the power of introverts, and we live in such an extroverted society that sometimes just the extroverts, um, you know, get, get the, uh, argument that, uh, have their argument prevail. And sometimes Robert Rules of Order can work to diffuse the talkative or loud person. And I think we did really well, but I would, that's one thing I learned looking back, that I would do differently, and recommend that you consider doing differently. And maybe it's a hybrid of the two. Maybe you, you normally don't do Robert's Rules of Orders, but, or then when you come to a situation where you're actually advancing topics, um, say, I need a vote on this, folks. What, what's this little task force discerning right now?
What was that book again?
Uh, Quiet. Um, it's been two or three years since I read it, but I highly recommend it. Helped me understand my introvertedness and, and a couple of my sons much better. And that whole, you know, one of the things that Motorola was brainstorming, uh, was really big back then, and it's one of the situations where they just said, you know, sometimes just the loud people's ideas got adopted, you know?
All right, um, that's all the questions we have, so, uh, thank you for your time and...
Appreciate it, and I have very much respect, uh, your contributions, and please, you know, it sounds corny, but elect the best person. That's really why, you know, I had to make sure that there were people here that were qualified and with experience, and that was my intent by being here, so please, go with the person that has the best, and I'm sure you will.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Anybody need a, you have five minutes, want to take a break or blow forward?
Either, I'm fine with either. I wouldn't mind calling my daughter quickly.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's fine, we have five minutes.
Thank you.
Yep. Finally arrived for children who don't have to text. All right, we are ready, it's Andy, thanks. Go ahead and have a seat, Kiran. And your name is pronounced Kiran?
Uh, Ki, run, but just don't have to say it.
Ki, run, all right, thank you.
That's how I taught my neighbor many years ago, you know, house key and run.
Uh-huh.
It's one word, not two.
All right, we have, uh, five questions that we're asking all of the candidates, and I will ask those five, and the other board members at the end may have other questions they would like to ask.
Sure.
We have about thirty minutes, um, scheduled for the, for the interview. And before we start, we'll just go around and, uh, give you all of our names. I'm Brenda Warren.
Andrew Becker?
Hi, I'm Ed Dorf.
Nice to meet you.
Laura McCoy?
Hello.
Katie Maloney?
Hello.
Rhonda Sitnikow?
Hello. And you all know my name?
Yes.
Kiran Kohl.
Kiran Kohl. Um, to start out, can you tell us why you want to be appointed to the school board, and what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
Okay. Uh, so I've been living in this community now for a little over fourteen years. Uh, when we moved here, we had no children, and I have now a ten-year-old who goes to the DaVinci School. Uh, and so, uh, you know, as part of that, we get involved with the school, and, you know, we like what's going on, uh, especially at least in that school. Uh, and, uh, you know, coming from India, there's not a lot of culture, cultural thi, culturally, we don't have a, in it, in our background to kind of give back to the community, and that's one of the things that's very typical here, you know, in this country. People talk about giving back to the community, and, uh, so we feel like, uh, I feel like I have a lot to offer here. A, I have an interest because my child is in the school, uh, district, uh, and will be for several years. Uh, and, uh, want to give something back to the community, that's, you know, the second reason. Uh, and thirdly, uh, uh, you know, I mean, I have, uh, eighteen-plus, twenty-years of corporate experience. I've worked in, uh, three different countr, excuse me. I've worked in three different countries, uh, two in Asia, one here in the US. Uh, I have experience working with, you know, different nationalities, and different backgrounds, different, uh, complicated projects. Uh, I have experience leading people, uh, through decision-making processes on projects or other things, uh, improving systems. Uh, so, uh, those are some of the things, the experience I have and the skills I have, I feel, can be used to, you know, help the board with, you know, your decision-making, making decisions on projects, improving systems in the school, whatever, uh, whatever it is that, you know, uh, you're set out to do. And, uh, now I, I probably wouldn't run for office if this was, you know, I had to run for it, I probably wouldn't do it right away, but I wanted to try it out. probably wouldn't do it right away, but I wanted to try it out, and this is a great opportunity to, you know, six months, I believe it's gonna be. So it'll be a great opportunity to find out if I like doing this, and then maybe if, you know, if I really do, I could consider running for election, if that's the case. The other, the last reason I think I want to be on the board is, Green Bay, when I first arrived, about fourteen years ago, was, you know, far less diverse than it is today. If you look in the schools especially, there's a lot of diversity, there's a lot of population, and I would be, you know, representing them, if you like. So make it more reflective of the community, if you, you know, think about it.
Okay. What are your three top priorities for the Green Bay Area Public School District?
Okay, I have to admit that I have not given that as much thought. I'm hoping to learn more about the board and what we do. I did go to your website and look at the meeting notes, and I wasn't able to necessarily figure out what it is that you, you know, I mean, the meeting notes kind of make it feel like it's all administrative, because they go in the format of, "This motion was proposed and approved and seconded and so on." However, I did look at your vision statement, and, you know, I support that, and I would basically be available to work with the board. So for the first six months, I don't have any specific things that I'm pushing. I want to learn about the board and what it's doing, and then, you know, depending on how I feel about that, if I run for election, then I will have, you know, concrete ideas on what I want to do with the board. But right now, I just want to help the board, you know, with whatever it is that you are doing, with the decision-making.
Describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
Okay, that was actually gonna be my question for you to confirm that for me. My understanding, if I were to take an analogy with like the government, or of a corporate board, you have the executive committee, so you have the district superintendent, and the executive committee, that is responsible for the day-to-day operation and running of the school district. And the board, as I understand it, is more of a direction-setting, vision-setting, and guiding, as well as monitoring the performance of the execution team. That's my understanding of it. Is that fairly accurate, you'd say?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
Actually, can I, can I, can you ask, can you go back to asking what he believes the administration's role is in the district?
Um, yeah, she'd like you to elaborate on your, the role of the administrations. I know you started off with that. Is there anything else?
Oh, the, the, the superintendent and that group, you mean?
The executive committee.
Yeah, so, so the state, I'm sure, has metrics, and I'm not familiar with all the metrics that measure school performance. I know the state has rankings on, you know, that rank the schools. And my understanding of that group is they are responsible for, you know, executing, to maintain and improve those rankings, identify problem areas, and, you know, address them. And the board probably helps with setting goals for them, help, maybe works collaboratively with the executive team to set those goals, you know, prioritize what areas need to be addressed.
Okay. Is that good, Rhonda? Yes. All right, so I'll repeat this next question. As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
So I have to ask you here, who are we advocating to in this case?
Whoever you want to advocate to.
I mean, are we talking fundraising, or are we talking, what kind of activities?
I would say in terms of advocating to the community would be how I would look at that.
Okay. Well, what, our customers, if you like, of the school board are the parents who reside here. So advocating, informing them, sharing what we're doing for the school district, you know, improve the education and the experience of the students and the parents. I mean, that would be the, I would imagine, the most important area of advocacy. Other areas would be, you know, fundraising and special projects, maybe with the elected So I can think of those two ways that I could advocate for the school board and the school district.
Okay. Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member board.
So one of my previous jobs was managing engineering projects at McTech Systems, which is a company in DePere. That company basically builds large industrial equipment, and my job was, once they got the order for the new equipment, then I would take it over from there and help it, and carry on the project until it is delivered to the customer, and it's up and running, and they make their final payment, and that was my role. So as part of that, overall leadership role of that team, there were engineers, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, designers, production people, purchasing people, they were all different disciplines. So it was a multidisciplinary team. I was the leader. I had to have weekly meetings where we reviewed the progress of the project, both internal meetings as well as externally with the customer. So I have experience working with large teams, large groups, meeting on a regular basis, pushing a project or, you know, working towards a goal, basically. And identifying issues, keeping track of those, list of issues, and making sure if somebody's working on them, tracking progress, so on.
All right, those are our set questions. Are there any other questions board members would like to ask, Rhonda?
How much experience have you had working, or socializing, or just, I guess, being around marginalized populations?
How would you define marginalized?
I guess populations of, of parents, kids, families, citizens who are struggling, who have a lot of challenges, are in need of a lot of social services, they're not, you know, they're not necessarily equipped with the tools that some people have.
I don't have, I have to admit, a lot of experience doing that kind of work. But I changed my, I, as I mentioned in my letter of interest, that I have an engineering background, but after eighteen years of doing engineering and project management, I wanted to do something different, I wanted to be helping people, and so I changed my careers and now work as a financial advisor with Edward Jones. And part of the reason I became that is because I wanted, I can, I feel like I have a natural knack for it, but also people don't, I mean, things are too complicated for them in terms of the financial matter, so I wanted to help people with their long-term goals, and that's what I do right now. But I wouldn't describe the people I work with as marginalized, but the kind of help they need, I mean, they do need a lot of help, you know, that's my experience. So helping them understand and navigate through the options and the difficulties, and helping them make decisions is what I do as part of my job. But I don't have experience working with, you know, necessarily people from, who have low income, or, so not so much. But I think the work is sort of similar, helping, understanding their needs, and what their goals are, and figuring out a way to help them achieve them, is what I do.
Thank you.
Laura?
Can you talk a little bit about your own educational background from the time you were first started in school as a child?
Sure.
You know, through to your, your educational, your educational path? What's it been like?
So I come from a family that has valued education. Both my father's parents were doctors, so this is in the twenties, thirties, they were doctors, nineteen thirties. And my uncle and my dad are both, you know, professionals, and all their grandchildren, myself included, are either doctors or engineers. So, I mean, I grew up in India, I went to, you know, school, finished my undergraduate engineering in India. I came to the US to do my master's. I was at the University of Utah in Salt Lake City. So, and that's my basic educational background. So in my school in India, the way they did things was, they would, once you got past fourth grade, or starting fourth grade, they had the equivalent of gifted-talented program, where they would pull, and it was a big school district, so they would pull the top sixty or eighty into special, they would pull them all together and group them in one class, and that, you know, so they could get extra attention. Sort of the same thing we're doing here with the gifted-talented school. And it was based on performance at the end of third grade, and they evaluated it every year. So, so I feel like, you know, that was, that's how it was done there. I see, when I see what's going on at Leonardo da Vinci, I kind of identify that as, you know, what I went through, and I think that was a big help. I actually feel that perhaps the school district should do something similar for the marginalized students, as you call it, you know, because they probably remain marginalized when they are in a diverse, I mean, I'm not talking about the feasibility of it, I'm just talking of it as an idea, just like the advanced students can benefit from having special attention given to them. I think the, you know, if we could pool together and have a school that, you know, does a similar thing for the marginalized, or the those who are weak or, you know, behind to begin with, before they are dispersed into regular schools, that might be an idea, something to think about, it's just something that came to my mind. Again, I have no idea of the feasibility of that, and practically.
It's actually quite feasible. We just got a grant in June to do something similar to what you're describing.
Really?
Yeah. It's gonna be called the New, N E W, Northeast Wisconsin Innovation School, right, Vicki?
School of Innovation.
School of Innovation.
Okay.
And it will be for students that have, you know, that are, that are struggling for a myriad of reasons in traditional schools, so stay tuned.
Yeah, as important as it is to, you know, cultivate the best students, it is equally important to bring up the bottom, so that the average is, you know, of acceptable quality. So I'm glad to hear that. I mean, that would be, if that's a project, I would love to be involved in that, if I'm on the board. Did I answer your question, by the way?
It did, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna ask my question again.
Go ahead.
What do you, how do you feel about tax dollars being spent on private charter schools?
So, let me tell you how it was in India growing up. There was public schools, and then there were private schools, and the private schools were not really that expensive. I went, there were, people who were interested in promoting education formed education societies. The name of the school I went to, its name was Indian Education Societies, English Medium School, that's what it was. And basically, it was a group of, you know, middle-class people who wanted, who had education as their interest, and they wanted to do something for the community. So they started their own schools. So technically, they were private, but they were s-
They were public, they were funded by private money.
The fees there were signif- were higher than what you would pay, while the public schools were free, but these were, had fees in them. And those fees were somewhat subsidized, but that's the system that was there in India. Here, an education is not necessarily a, free education is not available to everybody, or at least it wasn't when I was growing up in India. So to the extent that the mission is to educate everybody, any diversion of tax dollars that takes away from that does a disservice. And I think there's no reason why school districts can't do what we are doing. I mean, the idea of charter schools or private schools is to do something, at least as I understand it, similar to what Leonardo da Vinci is doing, which is, you know, give the better students, the gifted students, more support. So I like the idea of, I mean, in my mind, Da Vinci is a charter school, or almost like a charter school.
But I'm talking, I'm talking about private, not, so Da Vinci is a public charter.
Right.
Well, not charter, but it's, it's publicly funded.
Right.
But tax dollars going to private charter schools.
Yeah.
With less oversight and stuff.
Yeah, I don't unders- I don't really support that idea, because if they are getting public dollars, they should be held to the same standards as the public schools. I don't see why, and I don't know if they are, I believe they're not held to the same standards. So, so that part is the one that I probably don't support. At the same time, I mean, Green Bay is not in that category, but if the school district is failing its students, as it is in some cities around the country, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to something like that, as long as, you know, the playing field is level, that you don't have loser standards for the private schools, and, you know, stricter standards for public schools. It's easier to teach kids who are gifted and talented, you know, than it is to teach the kids who have lots of issues, who come to school hungry and therefore can't pay attention, or have, you know, whatever, problems at home. There's a lot of talk in America in general about the government should be doing things, and corporations and private sector should do that, and curing diseases, and defending the country, and some of these sorts of things, if they are not low-hanging fruit. The corporate and private sector can easily do the low-hanging fruit. Some of the things that are, you know, I mean, we wouldn't have the internet today if it were not for the government, funding that basic research. So, and I'm rambling a bit here, but I think there is a role for government, and if private wants to compete with government, that's fine, as long as they are, you know, having a level playing field.
Thank you. All right, that's all the questions that we have for you.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Do you have questions for us, or?
Well, I had the question exactly of what the board does, so if you could elaborate on my response, whether it was accurate or.
Yeah, no, it was, it was accurate.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I didn't, I don't think I, yeah, I don't think I would add to that myself.
Okay. And then one comment I had, when I looked at the vision statement, the document, the one-page document, it's got several sections in it. Is there a document behind it, like, which gives more detail, that has, you know, metrics on those measures? So I forget the exact statement, but let's say it says, maybe you can tell me one of the statements it says. But the question I had was, how do you measure that? And I didn't find that on the website anywhere. So one of the things they teach us in, you know, when setting goals, is they should be SMART goals, you know, specific, measurable, achievable, time-bound, so I didn't see that part.
Yeah, there are documents behind that, but I don't know that they're all on the website.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I assumed they were, I just was looking for them, so I could better prepare for the interview, and I couldn't find them.
Yeah, okay.
Can we tell him where he could find them?
I don't know that, I mean, they would be in the, all the school goals and personal goals, you know, every, everybody in the, at the administration level, at the school level, in the district office, you know, have goal-setting that are related to those- you know, have goal-setting that are related to those, the strategic direction that you saw on the district website. And some of them are, I'm looking for somebody, some of them are posted, I think, on our website?
And it might well be posted, I just, you know, quick searched through it, didn't-
It's what?
It is not.
It is not posted, yeah, but if you, we could get you a copy if you're interested.
And is that done at a district level?
Yeah, all of our policies are posted, that's under our, the board section.
All the, all the policies that govern the board?
No, that's not what I was looking for, I was looking for the-
The goal-setting, right.
The goal-setting, the specifics of, you know, we want, let's say we want to make this school, you know, a great experience for the students. Well, okay, if that's the vision, how do you measure that? How do you define that further? That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
So, is that district, is that goal-setting done at a school level, or is it also done at a district level?
Both.
Okay, both.
And then our teachers actually have goals too, so it's-
Right, and that's how I've-
It's all the way through the system.
And I worked for Procter &amp; Gamble for eleven years, and it's got, it had ninety-five thousand people worldwide, or sixty thousand people worldwide, I forget the number. But they had exactly the same thing, it started at the corporate level, and they said, okay, here's our objective, then they said, here's how we're measuring it, then they had strategies to achieve that objective, and then they had measures for the strategy. And then the next level organization down started from the last two columns, and did their four columns, you know, and then so on down to the individual employee level. Everybody's goals were tied to, everybody's activities and performance was tied to the, you know, ultimately, the department goal, which then built up into the-
I would say historically, that process is in place, but more bottom-up, and we're working on making it-
Top-down.
All the way through now. Not so much top-down necessarily, but from top to bottom, bottom to top, so that-
Right.
So that it's clear across the board that there have to be measurable objectives, you know, measurable outcome goals, regardless of where somebody is in the hierarchy of the organization. So that is being worked on currently.
And it cannot be only top-down, it starts from the top, but then it has to come back from the bottom, and in, there's obviously negotiation and agreement on what final document should be for the year. So, yeah, I mean, that's, I have experience with that sort of thing, obviously not from the top, but at my level of the organization, so.
Alright, very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, so when will I, when do you make a decision on this?
We'll make a decision tonight, and then we'll probably contact everybody tomorrow.
And I should have given this out first, but I had made a short resume.
Oh, that's fine, we'll take it. We'll take this, we'll pass it on to you. Okay, sorry, thank you very much for your time here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodnight. Just those five copies, so, we'll share it here. Alright. Alright, you can bring Eric in. Eric? Alright, so-
Hey.
Nice to see you again. Same thirty minutes for your interview, same as last time, we have five questions to ask, and then some board members may have other questions to add on to those.
Okay.
And first, we'll start by just letting you know who we are at the table, I'm Brenda Warren.
Yeah, I mean, you actually don't have to go through that, I mean, because I do know who all of you, yes.
Right, we're good, okay. Alright, so first, if you could tell us why you want to be appointed to the school board, and what contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
Sure, I, just in a nutshell, would like to be appointed to the school board, because I think I bring a skill set and a set of perspectives that doesn't currently exist on the board, so frankly, I think I can help the board be a better problem-solving entity. As a, just sort of a plug for myself, as all of you know, there was a contested election that just finished about four months or so ago, and I, well, you know, basically came in fourth, I was the first sort of non-incumbent. And so, in terms of justifying the decision you're making now to your constituency, I guess I consider myself the safe choice. I, by definition, have more votes than anyone else that you have applying. And, and so, you know, as a justification for your choice, I think that's a pretty good one. In a way, I've kind of been pre-selected, at least I think of it a little bit that way. The other point I would make is that, really, because of that election, I kind of bring a demonstrated commitment to being of service to the district. I don't know for sure if any of the other candidates who've expressed interest tonight, expressed interest for the last open position last October or November, but I do know that none of them went on to then actually run a campaign to try to be part of the board. So, I guess you know that I'm pretty serious about wanting to be on the board. In a nutshell, in terms of the skills I would bring, I, you know, have been, I'm a lawyer, I've been in the business community for over twenty-some years, and so I would bring a kind of a business-oriented, problem-solving perspective to the issues faced by the board.
Alright, what are your top three priorities for the Green Bay School District?
Okay, I wrote down four, so the top priority would be really attracting and retaining the best teachers we can. I think that, you know, maybe this is stating the obvious, but that educators in the classroom, I believe, are the most important part of the district's mission. And so, to the extent that we can attract and retain the best teachers possible, that's a huge priority for me. To the extent that we are losing teachers to other districts, I think we should be digging in as deeply as we can to figure out why that's happening, and then are there things we can do to improve that situation? My second kind of top priority would be exploring what's going on with open enrollment, and the district's experience with open enrollment. I've reviewed the numbers, and the ratio of students that we lose to students that we gain through the open enrollment program is about five to one. Milwaukee is at like four to one, Madison's three point five to one. Again, I don't know for sure what, why that is happening, but I think it should be a priority of the board to dig deep into why that's happening, and figure out what we can do to improve that situation. The final priority that I would have is just improving communication between the kind of downtown administration and educators in the field. This is more, somewhat anecdotal, although to bring it back to data, I've taken just a brief look through the recent staff surveys that have gone out. And the first thing that jumped out to me was that last year's, twenty seventeen, had about a seventy-five percent participation rate, twenty eighteen, fifty-three percent. That just raises concerns for me, that the people who are taking the survey may be feeling like, well, you know, I don't, I don't care to participate, because I'm not sure that, that I'll be listened to. And that's actually reflected in some of the answers. Some of the answers along the lines of, I'm paraphrasing here, but, "Do you trust your administration to respond to my concerns?" The response is in the fifty percent, something fairly low. And so, again, this is, I don't know why that's happening, I don't know the exact problems, but I think those are areas that as a board member, I would want to look into, figure out why some of those things are happening, and figure out what kind of solutions we might, we might come up with.
Alright, describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district?
My understanding of the school board's role is, well, the board would primarily, I guess their biggest role would be hiring, supervising, and I guess potential, hiring and supervising the administration primarily, you know, from kind of the top on down. I recognize that board members are often asked to solve problems kind of further down the line. I don't think the board's role is to necessarily micromanage or solve each individual problem, but they can oversee and supervise the resolution of those, those issues. So, I guess in a nutshell, that's what I think the, the board's function is.
And then, what would you say the administration's role is in the district?
Well, the administration's role is to facilitate the, the best performance in the classroom that it can. And so, you know, kind of one of the, well, there are really two principles that I brought to my campaign, and I would bring to my request today. The first is really just a very basic overriding principle, that I think public education is the most important investment that any community can make in itself and its future. Secondly, and I, the staff, principals, teachers in the classroom is the most important way that we achieve, you know, public education. And so, a question I would ask, and I think the administration should be asking as it decides on priorities, would be, how does this advance education in the classroom? And so, I think that's, the administration's role is to do everything it can to advance education in the classroom, and that should be the principle that really underlies, overlays every decision that the administration makes. You know, and I do get by the way, that this is, it's a thankless and extremely difficult task. I do believe that, you know, education, public education has been kind of under siege for various political reasons. You guys and the administration are trying to do a job kind of with one hand tied behind your back, and so there's a lot of very tough decisions to be made, and priorities to be made. To me, that principle of, how does this choice over this choice advance education in the classroom, I think is- Kind of.
As a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
Well, I mean, I guess one way is not to simply focus on, okay, here's an area of concern, here's a problem, that sort of thing. I think on the open enrollment side, I recognize that there's kind of a PR component to all of that. And so, I think it is important that we discuss successes in the district, and that we focus on things that have gone right, and focus on those things. I am, well, I believe that there are quite a number of areas that we do a better job of in Green Bay than neighboring school districts. And so, to the extent that we can focus on those issues and kind of get that message out, that's great. That helps start solving the open enrollment sort of drain that we're experiencing.
And please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member board?
The best example that I can think of is, in my previous job, I worked for a manufacturing company down in Appleton, and was initially part of the negotiation team, and then became responsible for the negotiating team for the union contracts. It actually was union contracts for six or seven facilities around the country. And what I learned and was able to demonstrate is the, a negotiating style that was basically collaborative. Most of the time, when there were issues that came up, and when we went into these negotiations, the, the initial wish list on each side was, you know, seventy-five items long. There was a story behind sort of each one of those seventy-five items. Quite often, the gut reaction for, I was part of the negotiation on the management side, but I know that the union side had the same reaction, you know, they'd see our list of seventy-five items, and initially have a pretty negative reaction. You'd say, well, you know, what the heck are they thinking, they can't ask for that? You know, and it would happen sort of both ways. And I was part of a more collaborative process where we would really just dig in a little bit on each of those items to find out what the concerns really were. Sometimes there was sort of an impasse on those items, but more often than not, you found out that a particular item, what the union was concerned about, was something different than what management was concerned about, and there was some kind of workaround or compromise, you know, in a solution. And that was, that was, it was pretty effective. We had relatively good relations between the sides, which wasn't true for, you know, for every kind of management, union discussion at other companies.
Alright, do other board members have questions? Rhonda?
So what is something that differentiates you from the rest of the candidates? A side, sorry, a side that you ran for office?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't kind of vet the other candidates to see what their, sort of what their skill sets are. I don't know that any of them are lawyers, so I have a legal perspective on problem-solving, that, you know, I've, there have been times in sort of observing the board's activities where there were questions that I would have asked as a lawyer that didn't get asked. And so, that would be something I would bring. And the business background, again, I didn't vet the other people who've expressed interest, so I don't know if they have similar business backgrounds, I know that none of you guys do. Now, that's not a bad thing, everyone, I think, brings a different set of skills and a different set of perspectives, and the more kind of diverse those skills and perspectives are, I think the more effective the, the group is as a problem-solving.
I'm gonna challenge you on that.
How does that?
Tell me what you mean by business background.
I can give you one, just observation of something I think the board can do better. My observation is that the board will identify an issue, and then it sort of floats, you know, sort of gets put off to a future agenda, and it takes a long time for stuff to get done. Now, as one board member, I don't think I could change that immediately, but I can approach that with sort of my, you know, what I've been trained and how I've been trained to address these problems with a sense of urgency. So if, for example- So, if, for example, you know, the board sort of decides, we need a new principal at Washington, we need to find a turnaround principal at Washington, you know, maybe we can start that process in a couple of board meetings in a few months instead of a year, that sort of thing. So, that would be one example, sort of that urgency of, okay, let's identify an issue and then do something about it and press things along.
Thank you. Anyone else? Laura?
Can you give me some examples of what you think the district does well?
Yes. I, I think a lot of the, well, one of the best things they've done, and this comes from a former student of the district, is the whole Da Vinci School and that whole gifted and talented program. I think that's outstanding. It's great. It's something that wasn't offered years ago when I was in the district. I think that's really good. I happen to know of all sorts of great things that happen within the special education system. So, I think there are lots of good things that happen there. The other thing I would say is every time that I've sort of dug deep or met with individuals in the district, I'm consistently impressed with how intelligent, how committed, how really just high-quality the people that I meet in the district are.
Are you talking about teachers, administrators?
Talking about teachers, administrators, you know, really generally, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's very rare that I've talked with anyone and thought, you know, ooh, that's so great. It's really high-quality people.
Did you have a question?
I do, yeah. Eric, I remember last year when you were sitting there, and then in the campaign, you had some thoughts and concerns regarding staffing, particularly at the administrative management level. Where's your thinking on that nowadays?
That was my Adam number four, by the way. I'd asked for three, so I'll get to address it, yeah. I mean, I do believe that our administration is top-heavy and primarily based on sort of, you know, kind of the budget for administration growing sort of over the years. And so, for me, it would be a priority to do what I could to redirect resources from administration back into the classroom. Now, that can be done, you know, that sounds like it could be sort of a harsh burning down the house kind of thing. That's not necessarily what I'm talking about. Things can be done through natural attrition. There are other ways of achieving that, but that would be a high priority for me. So, I don't feel any differently about that now than I did four months ago.
Okay, thanks. So, just to clarify, you're talking about your philosophy, if you were to look at the size of administration relative to other positions, would be to deal with it through examining things when positions became vacant, when retirements happened?
That's one way of doing it, yeah. And, I mean, if the board as a decision-making body decided to make that an actual project, I would be all on board, you know, doing an examination of, okay, is there a way we could reduce administration expenses by 10%? Terrific, that'd be great. Obviously, as a single board member, you know, you know.
Sure, but the philosophy between, right, there are a couple of different, I mean, a board could, a board could vote to do it like that, but then there's also, so I guess I'm kind of trying to get more of your philosophy on that.
My philosophy on that would be to be as, you know, sort of compassionate as you could be about that. I don't believe in sort of slash and burn, doing it like that, you know, unless the board felt that the administration in the district was in a crisis situation immediately where that had to be done. I do think there are ways of achieving those savings, you know, somewhat urgently, but not, you know, like that. If that makes sense.
In your evaluation of the top-heavy administration, did you look at anything else besides the budget in terms of roles?
Yeah, I've talked to a lot of people, and so it's sort of anecdotal support of what it looks like on paper.
And when you say talked to a lot of people, like?
Dozens.
In our district or in the community?
In the district, yeah. And what I will say, and take this for what it's worth, is when people would either respond to the question about, usually they volunteered it, it was tossed off sort of casually as just a fact of life. It didn't seem to be, you know, here's a crazy idea, I think I'm the only one who thinks that. So, it's a widely-held view.
By people in the administration or outside of the administration?
More outside of administration.
All right. Laura?
I've asked everyone this question since I've asked you two. What's your view on tax dollars being spent on private charter schools?
I am opposed. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think that divert, I think all it does is divert money from the public education system, which I really think is the core of a healthy society. I mean, I can't be more passionate about what I think that way. And it's just dollars away from that endeavor with no real clear benefit, you know? And I, I mean, and it's not fair. The, most of those schools don't have to meet the same standards, et cetera, et cetera. I sort of have the notion that, you know, if we had a debate on that topic, probably most board members would sit around and, you know, it'd be a mutual support in society on that topic, I think.
I have another question. Let's say you're appointed.
Yes.
What is your first agenda item that you want to look at to have a discussion about?
Probably open enrollment, because that's one where, I know the issue has come up, you know, it's not a surprise. I know that there's been some discussion about digging deeper into why are we losing students at the rate that we're losing them? I don't know what kind of answers the board is formulating. So, that would be the first thing I would want to know. And, you know, if I got to be a board member and we had, you know, kind of the first work session, and it turns out that there are four or five identified problems and solutions and all of that, then yahoo, I'd be excited.
We actually, can I tell you, we actually are having that conversation right now?
Excellent.
We just had this at the last meeting, that we're looking at, looking into finding out what those reasons are, contracting with a company to, I guess, check that out?
Excellent. I'm glad to hear it.
And I'm curious, if you can help me just go down a little bit deeper to why you feel that open enrollment is the most critical thing that we should be addressing right now?
I don't necessarily. I think Rhonda's question was, what would be the first thing you would do?
Right, so then I interpreted that as what you think is most critical?
No, not necessarily. I chose that as the first thing I would do because it's pretty amenable to analysis and problem-solving. And so, it's sort of sitting there, right there, and, well, I mean, it sounds like it's not just teed up, you're actually taking a swing at it, so that's terrific, I'm glad.
On the burger.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Is there anything else you'd like to leave us with?
No, other than just kind of repeating, you know, as the first runner-up, I think I'm the safe choice, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks, I was going to shake your hand.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't quite sure how you closed this. All right, thanks, Rhonda. Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ready?
Let me get a coffee.
Good. Hang on, one minute, a coffee.
Anyone else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Cola, I have a little nosebleeds.
Sorry, I'm sleeping like crap lately.
Three days, shit. Which is really good. Are you, Christina, yeah, I thought so.
I didn't know if you were ready for me now.
Yes, we are. Come on forward.
Didn't know if you needed a rest or a break.
Yeah, no. All right, welcome.
Hi.
And we have five set questions that we've asked all of the candidates, and then after we finish those, some board members will have other follow-up questions and things like that. And we've allowed 30 minutes for the interview. Before we start, I'll have everyone introduce themselves. I'm Brenda Warren, we've met before.
Andrew Becker.
Hi, I'm Ed Dorf.
Laura McCloy.
Katie Maloney.
Rhonda Sitnikow.
Thank you.
All right, so first question is, why do you want to be appointed to the school board, and what contributions will you bring, sorry, I think I can do this after six times. What are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
Yeah, such a good question. I assumed you would start off with that. So, my husband and I moved to Green Bay five years ago from the East Coast. When we moved here, my daughter was going into kindergarten, and when we were talking to people about where we were going to live, it was really clear as soon as we moved here that we wanted to be in Green Bay. He works at UPGB. And so, we really wanted to find a community for our family that we could really invest in. We had moved around a lot, we had our children, we were both in grad school and studying, and so we were all over the country, and we really wanted to be in a community that we could really grow our roots. And it was interesting because we didn't know anything about Green Bay, but we said this is where we're going to be, and we heard outstanding things about the school district. And so, we were really excited to really get involved here in our community. And what has energized me is the community itself. I mean, the people here and the work and the positivity and the way that there are opportunities to get involved is outstanding. I think moving around and seeing other larger urban areas and seeing how difficult it is to get involved. When I got here, I was just super energized by the openness of people, the work that people were doing, the teachers at the school, the principal, the parents. It just really seemed like it was a place that there was something for everybody. And so, what we did was we really just started to reach out to people and start to get to know people. What is everybody doing? How does it all connect? Asking a lot of questions and really just going into it with relationship building. And for me, what that really grew into was really a natural process of learning about the district. My background is all in education, public education. I was a teacher, and I still work in the education field now in a nonprofit. So, as I got really involved in my kid's school and our community work, I just found, I was just really inspired by the work of our community members to just get more involved directly with the school board. The things that I think that I bring to, I could bring to the board is a level of experience both at the depth and breadth of education. I have six years of public school teaching experience. I was a middle school and high school teacher. I was also a dean of students at a middle school. I even coached high school boys' basketball in Colorado. I even, and then I taught at a large community college in Northern Virginia. So, I have that good mix of public school with the higher ed. And I currently work at a nonprofit right now that works with school districts all over the country. So, I just feel that I really have a good understanding of what's happening nationally, and I'm able to sort of filter that down at a very hyper-local level that sort of allows me to keep a pulse of what's happening, but really to make those connections with what's happening on our community.
What are your top three priorities for the Green Bay area public school district?
Such a good question. I think the first one is transparency. I think people want to know what's going on. They are committed and they're believers in the school district, but there's just so much false information out there that gets circulated on social media and people talking, and really, it comes from a good place because people are emotional because it's their school, it's their kids. They, they want the system to work. And what I've learned over the past few years is more often than not, the chitter and the chatter that you hear is not always the full story, and I think the district can do a better job. We all can do a better job of being more transparent and sort of getting out in front of the message to make sure that people know really what's happening. I would say the second piece for me is community engagement and partnerships. I think that is completely necessary and strategic. We have an amazing community here of experts and passionate advocates for public education. And to me, building a community is really creating a system where people are able to show up and do their best work and given an opportunity to really shine and to be a part of their community. I would say the third part is bringing in the best teachers and the best staff and uplifting our, all of our voices in the school district. So, if we've got great teachers, we need to give them opportunities to be coaches and leaders in their district. And I also think that we need to be sharing best practices and stories of success and struggle with our students and with our teachers across the different buildings. So, I'd say communication is really that last piece.
All right. Describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
Yeah, so the school board's job is not to run the district, right? That we have a lot of amazing staff, administrative personnel at the district level that do their jobs and do their jobs really well. I see the school board as being a governing body that really is meant to work with the district and with the superintendent in partnership with them to really do the work and to solve our community's most pressing issues and to share the successes that we are currently experiencing. As a school board member, I assure you that connecting with school district personnel and teachers and parents and students will be of the most importance for me, and I think this is a skill that I have. I know how to talk to teachers, I was one. I know how to talk to parents, I am one. I know how to talk to community partners, I do that. And so, I feel like my skill level, being able to bridge all those different divides, would bring something to the board.
And then, what do you see as the administration's role in the district?
Yeah, I see the administration's role as really making those day-to-day decisions and really working with the board to sort of give guidance to, you know, what we, providing that information that we need so that we can do our job. The administration, I think we need to give them the flexibility and the credibility to do what they need to do to run a school district that's as large as ours.
And then, as a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
Yeah. I think getting out there and listening to understand what people are talking about is crucial to being an advocate. We all show up and we have our own lens, and we have our own opinions, and we have our own experience, and as being a school board member, it's critical and crucial to be able to set those pieces aside, or at least to be aware that you are carrying those, so that when people are talking and they're sharing what they are going through, what their needs are, that we can really listen and bring those back to the board and to the district to advocate for what those needs are. And that may be something at a family level, that may be a parent level, that may be a student level, that may be with a teacher. But to me, being an advocate is being a champion and thinking critically about how we can work together to meet everyone's needs.
All right, thanks. Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member school board?
Okay, can you repeat that again?
Sure.
Thanks, that's long.
It is long. Please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member board?
That is a good question. A leadership style skill that I would be able to bring. At my current job, I work for a nonprofit called Action for Healthy Kids. We are a national nonprofit that works with schools all around the country. And a few years ago, whenever I was brought on full-time, I was brought on to manage a large grant project and to do some of our fieldwork for health and physical education and nutrition education at the, within our, within our programs. at the, within our, within our programs. One of the things that I had seen, that I was noticing prior to coming on as a full-time staff was some concerns that I had with our organization internally. And I won't go into what those concerns are, but I had deep concerns about some things that were happening. But I was worried because I had just been brought on full-time and nobody wants to show up in the first month that you're brought up full-time and say like, "Hey, I have these really deep concerns about our organization." Interestingly, the CEO of our nonprofit had given us a book called Courageous Conversations and it was all about having really tough conversations internally and sort of solving our problems, you know, at an organization. And, and so I took it as a sign and I was like, "Well, Rob's giving me this book. He clearly wants to have a tough talk." So, you know, I said, "If this is going to be the organization I'm going to work with, I need to really show up. I've been hired to do this work and to be honest and to, to share when I have concerns." And I did just that. I scheduled a call with him. It was a really tough conversation. But in the end, he actually agreed with me. And he said, you know, he was really, said he was impressed with my candor and my honesty. And I had spent three months prior to that call coming up with a project plan to not only address the concerns, sorry, that I had, but to also, how are we, how would we organizationally move forward with this? And at the end, he gave me a budget and now I am the lead of that project team working on that specific topic. And this year, we brought on a consultant and so forth. So I think for me, the skill is, I feel strongly that if I, if something's happening, that we need to be having courageous conversations and constructive dialogue. And that doesn't mean that we're all going to agree, but what it does mean is that to solve what our school districts, our, our school district is facing and to move forward with our changing and growing school demographic, we've got to really show up every day. And it's really uncomfortable at times, but I believe that those conversations are really important.
Okay. That's five questions. At this point, I'll see if board members have any other follow-up questions.
I actually have two questions. First of all, what would you, if you were appointed, what would be the first thing you would want to look into or bring to the table for discussion at the board level?
What would I want to engage in? Well, one is onboarding Rhonda. I would want to make sure I really understand all of the policies and the procedures and the way that the board operates. And I've spent a good amount of time over the past month looking at all of these documents. But obviously, reading them is different than working through them. So I would definitely want to make sure that I was looking to the board for leadership and support to make sure that as I was being onboarded, that I was doing it appropriately. I think moving forward, I'm really interested in the Safe Routes to School Grant that is coming up for this school year. That was actually something that I had been talking to the mayor's office about was the Safe Routes to School. I'm familiar with the grant as the organization I work for actually partners with that organization as well. And then also, some of the other community outreach programs. I was just reading the other day about the Barber Shop program, working with Washington Middle School. And so I think looking for other natural and organic opportunities that exist would be of significant interest for me moving into eighteen, nineteen. Just pause for a second and think what school year it was.
I'll just ask my last question. So what is it about you specifically that you, if you have to contrast yourself? Because I think to some degree, you have to, right? This is a contest. This is a, you know, someone's going to be picked. So what is it that you could tell us about yourself that is, that stands out that maybe is, makes you unique, just, you know, choice for this, this appointment?
Yeah. Before I get into that, I think it's important to first recognize that we're all, what, what brings us here and what brings us to this table and what brings all the candidates here tonight, which I don't know if anyone's here, but I appreciate them the time and the dedication and the interest in this position, that we're all here for champions, for public education and for our kids. But moving beyond that, I think what contrasts me is I live and breathe in a growth mindset. So recently, over the past year, I have started to DJ events. I'm really into music. My husband laughed at me and said, "You're thirty-eight years old. You can't DJ." And I was like, "I can do this. Like, I'm interested. I'm going to do this." I signed up for a marathon with my mom and I'm running that in October. I have been really involved at the state level in Wisconsin with some different organizing and groups. So I just feel like you're never too old to learn something new. And anyone who tells me that I can't do anything or can't do something is going to get checked because I, I believe that being in that growth mindset is crucial for learning.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a question, Laura?
Yes.
Can you name some things that you believe that the district is doing well?
Yeah, I think that as a, as a whole, our teachers are phenomenal. And we have amazing, amazing teachers and principals. Every time I go into a building, I, my kids go to Aldo Leopold, but I, you know, I'm around, around in the, in the district. People talk about our teachers and how passionate and dedicated they are. They live in our community. They show up. They're at evening events. They're at morning events. And, and to go back to the principals as well, I mean, it is incredible to see how the principals are able to connect at a community level and really bring people in. For example, last year, I was working with Aldo Leopold. We got a grant to work on physical activity and nutrition initiatives. And we did a breakfast event, a free family breakfast event at Aldo Leopold. And we worked with the school nutrition director and they came in and we did, we did this whole event and we had special guests. And people want to be involved and they want to do good works. It's just giving people opportunity and, you know, the know-how and sort of the nudges to get involved. It's, it's just incredible.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Again, I've asked this of everybody. So tell me what your position is on spending tax dollars on private charter schools.
Yeah. I have an interesting perspective. I've worked both in a charter school and in a public school district. I think it's a very complicated answer, right? There's no, to me, it's not a yes or no. I'll give you an example. When I taught in the Philadelphia School District, when I started my, my teaching career, I taught there for six months. And it was, the building that I was in at the time was not a good fit for me. And I was not, at the time, able to succeed in my position.
It was a, it was a public school?
It was a public school. It was a public high school. But I ended up going to a charter school and I taught there for two years. And there were a lot of components about the charter school that I really liked. However, I know that it was problematic. There were issues at the time. I think the biggest thing for me with charter schools is, one, is accountability. Who is overseeing it? What are they doing? Who has the power to make decisions? And how does it integrate into the public school system? I think charter schools can give flexibility in a way that public schools can't. I worry about the transition of power to charter schools a hundred percent. So that accountability and transparency to me is key.
So tax dollars, but how do you feel about tax dollars flowing in that direction?
I don't necessarily have a problem with it as long as we have a solid reason why that charter school exists and we are clear about what its mission and goals are and what that transparency and oversight is.
Even if it's under private ownership?
We have public charter schools too.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's challenging. I caution against private ownership, companies and corporations coming in and running charter schools. I've worked for one and it didn't go well. But that doesn't mean that it's a hundred percent that that's always what happens. So I think, again, understanding what the charter is, what the mission of the school is and the transparency and accountability gives us a better sense of how we make decisions.
Can I interject here?
Sure.
Are you, are you, are you typically stating more so a parochial school?
Receiving private schools?
Any, any private, any private school.
So private school, parochial school, not in the school district of Green Bay?
I thought the answer, the question was about charter schools.
Or are you referring to voucher schools too?
I guess. I, maybe I should have been clearer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking specifically about charter schools.
I did say charter schools, but go ahead and expand on that if you, if you can. As far as parochial schools and...
Because we don't have any private charter schools in Green Bay.
I, I know. I just, I, I guess it's a avenue to a person's thinking on, on tax, how tax dollars are spent in education in general.
I'm a champion for public education and public school systems. Make that very, very clear. I think you see in some communities where people, the community rallies around a different option. And to say that that should never happen, I think, is, is shutting people's voices down. I think here, we have a wonderful school district and I don't see why we would need to ship public taxpayer money out of the district. But again, without a, without a scenario, it's, it's hard to make a hundred percent statement. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
That's fine.
Any other questions? No? All right.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Yeah, thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a phone for the phone, I mean, a microphone for the telephone? All right. Well, we can take, we have John Yankee's by phone. He's not expecting us till eight o'clock. So maybe we'll just take a, let's, we'll try him at five to eight.
Brenda, I did tell him it could be give or take.
Okay. Dial nine. How do I get it on speaker? Because it's on a microphone here.
Just hang on.
Nine?
Nope, you don't need the area code. Right. Just nine and five sixteen.
Nine, okay.
Hello, this is John Yankee.
Hi, John. This is Brenda Warren calling from the school board.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. Are you all set for the next half an hour for your interview?
Yep.
Okay, good. At the table is, we have six board members here. All six of us are here. It's Andrew Becker, Ed Dorf, Laura McCoy, I'm Brenda Warren, Katie Maloney, and Rhonda Sitnikow. And we have five standard questions that we've asked each of the candidates. And then board members will have a few other questions after we ask you those five questions. So do you have any other questions before we begin?
No, first, I just want to say thank you very much for accommodating.
Sure, yeah, no problem. We're glad to be able to do that. And just to let you know, you are on speakerphone. And we are recording this as we did for all of the candidates. So just to let you know that. And there are other people in the room primarily representing the central office administration.
Okay.
All right, so the first question we have is, why do you want to be appointed to the school board? And what are the contributions you think you can make to the leadership of the district?
Well, the reason I'd like to be appointed is because I think I bring a unique perspective. First off, I am a, my, my kids will be the fourth consecutive generation in my family to attend Green Bay Public Schools. And so I know a lot of the history of the district as I've lived it personally. The other thing is, I think with my work that I've done the last couple of years with the Scottson Promise Grant, I've worked with families who have kids with disabilities and families who are economically disadvantaged. And so I think I bring a perspective of, I know there's a groups that the, the district has tried to reach out to in the past and continues to try to. And I think there's wonderful programs. But I think sometimes that link gets missed with families. And I think I would bring a perspective of maybe where, how we could better serve these families, especially with the homelessness problem in Green Bay and in the IEPs. And so I think I bring a unique perspective. And I, and also my, I have two sons. I have one son who, who has identified as gifted and has done well. And so I understand how he works within the district. And then I have another son with a disability. And so I've seen the special ed side of the school. And so I think that, that gives me a new, a unique perspective that hopefully some of those ideas I can share and help guide the district. So that's why I'm interested.
Okay. And what are your three top priorities for the Green Bay area public school district?
So I think it would be, the, the three top priorities would be, one, to, to look for more ways to integrate kids in special ed into regular ed, into the mainstream. Because I think, and I say this all the time, it's not some benevolent thing we should do for kids with disabilities. It's something that serves the whole community. These people live in our community. And once you graduate from high school, there is no special ed room in life. I mean, everyone's together. And so the way we can look for opportunities, obviously, there's, there's got to be some times where kids in special ed get pulled out to get the, so their needs served. But we need to look for more opportunities to integrate them. And I'd like to, in my role in the school board, look for opportunities to find ways to do that. And also, it's, it's a more physically responsible way to do that. Constantly pulling kids out and having special, separate things really ends up being more costly. Another, I apologize, I lost my train of thought. So another goal I would have for the district would be to work on, work to safety and look for ways to have more people in the building talking to kids and recognizing kids and understanding where kids are coming from and identifying. And the third one would be looking for ways that the district can help kids that are homeless or struggling, you know, home unstable or food unstable. And so those, those are sort of the things that I would look for ways that the district could do a better job.
Okay. And then describe your understanding of the school board's role and the administration's role in the district.
I, I think it's meant to just put guidelines in. I mean, we're not in the classroom. We don't set curriculum. It's understanding where, where the funding needs to best serve the community. And, and under, you know, it's more of a, it's more of a guidance. It's not as much hands-on. And so looking for ways to direct the funding to help the areas that need help, whether it be in academics or whether it be supporting more of the career-ready. And so it's more, it's more of an overseer is how I see it.
Okay. And then what's your understanding of the administration's role in the district?
I guess the administration, so the administration as far as the superintendent and the people that work within the district office?
Yes, or, and also, and also I would say the principal level too.
Okay, and I, I think that's, well, the principal level, that's different. They're working with teachers and understanding, helping to direct the curriculum and helping teachers make sure they have the training they need and understand what they're supposed to be putting into the classroom. And then at the administration at the district level is to guide those principals to help understanding what DPI is looking to get in districts. And again, to guide the principals to make sure they're getting their, their teachers the training they need.
Okay. And as a school board member, how would you be an advocate for the district's schools and students?
Well, I think because, and like I said, number one, I live it. My kids go to, you know, Green Bay Public Schools. They go to their, well, my oldest son goes to his homeschool. We don't, school choice. My youngest son, because of his disability, was placed in a different thing and in a different school. Unfortunately, I would have preferred he went to his homeschool. But, so number one, the, the part of how I do it is I live it in my everyday life. But number two, I think that when I, when I do interact with the community, I talk about the programs that the schools have, like West with the IB program and how that can get kids ready for college and get college credit. And the, the arts program at East and how they can help kids direct them toward careers in the arts. And then Southwest with the technology and the, the trouble with culinary. And I think, and there's other schools. And so understanding what each one of those does and how those are excellent opportunities for kids within the district and just sharing that knowledge. And, because I do think even when I talk about the IB program at West, I think people don't understand it. And so just getting out there and sharing that knowledge and making sure people are aware that the Green Bay Public Schools have excellent programs to help kids advance to, to achieve the goal to be college, career, and community-ready. And so, and so in my role, I would continue to do a lot of what I do and talk about the great things that the Green Bay Public School District does.
All right. And then please identify, this is a long question, so I can repeat it if you need me to. to, but please identify specific examples of situations where you have demonstrated a working style, communication skills, leadership skills, or decision-making skills that show that you would be effective on a seven-member school board.
So, actually, the work that I do right now with the Grant for Wisconsin Promise, we work with youth and families, families who have youth with disabilities. And so, we have to help them work through the different systems that are available in the community to support them, like DVR or the ADRC or helping them understand where food banks are and things like that. And so, part of that work is I'm constantly working with different agencies that have groups of people. So, I can't, I can't do any of the work I do on my own. I have to collaborate with DVR, I have to do scheduling, I have to meet families sometimes at an agency that I've never experienced before. And I have to work with those people to understand and problem-solve and understand where they're coming from to then guide that family. And so, all of my work that I do is collaboration. And it's coming in with my set of knowledge, coming in with the family, what their expectations are, and then what the agency can do in helping meet that. And I think working on a school board would be very similar. Each of us is going to come with different ideas, we're going to come with different plans of where we think the district could be. And it's about finding that common ground and also finding out what we can do. Because until I get in a position, I, you know, I don't know what I don't know yet. So, it's understanding how the systems work and how each individual works. And so, that way, we can collaborate. And also, through it, I've had to learn. I may think I know something, but as I go in and I learn more about an agency or I learn more about a program, then I sort of change my perspective. Because once I know what it does, maybe what I thought it could do, it can't. And so, it's understanding that as an individual, I'm not always right. I can always learn more. Then, once I understand how the system works, then how can that system best serve whatever need it's trying to fill? And then, and then again, going back to understanding that we all come from different places and looking for areas of agreement to then move forward. So.
All right.
Those are examples of how I've used those types of skills.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Then, at this point, I'll open it up to other board members if you have questions.
Rhonda?
Is he going to be able to hear me from my microphone? Do you want me to come over?
He should.
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay. Hi, John. If you were appointed, John, what would be your first item that you would want to bring to the table for discussion?
I think it would be looking for more, right now at Kennedy School, they're doing something, they're doing a peer support program where they have regular ed kids working with special ed kids. And it's showing amazing growth, not just for the kids in special ed, but for the kids in regular ed to understand and to be more compassionate. And also, a lot of times, when a student is teaching someone, they're also learning. So, when they're, when a student from regular ed is working with a kid from special ed, they're not just teaching that kid, they're also learning better themselves because when we teach, we learn. And so, I would look for ways, that's the number one thing I want to do is look for ways to expand that program. Because I think I've seen the good that it can do and the difference it can make. And also, even throughout my work, I've seen when we do peer supports like that, the difference it makes. And again, the more peer supports that's available, the fewer you need of paras and aides and that type of thing. They become natural supports and it makes more sense. And so, that's sort of, and given my background, it shouldn't be a surprise that that would be something I would look to, I would look for ways to expand something like that.
Sorry, that's really loud, sorry. Do you have, is there a name for that program?
It's the POPS program, I believe is what they call it.
Okay.
Laura? In the second question...
I can hear.
Oh, okay, good.
In the second question, it was, it was, what are your three top priorities for the Green Bay Area Public School District? And you mentioned something about safety and having more people in the school. I think I heard you correctly, but...
No, I think what it's saying is, the people who work in the school, and all the people, when it comes to school safety, it needs to be everyone in the school looking for ways to interact with the students. So, even a janitor learning to say hi to a kid or the women who work in the lunchroom looking to say hi. And just, the whole building needs to be welcoming. And I think because kids, especially when we go into the communities that are more, that are less stable socio-economically, a lot of those kids don't have security at home. So, if they don't feel welcomed and secure at school, it makes it just another place they don't feel comfortable. And so, I would like to, I think an answer as opposed to, there's a lot of different ideas out there. But I think ultimately, kids have to want to be there. And the more we as a school community and the more staff at schools can make all kids feel more welcome when they come into that building, I think it would go a long way. I don't think that's like the silver bullet, I don't think that solves everything. But I think that's something that makes a big difference. I think it makes a bigger difference than people realize. I think even I've seen, because I go into homes with my work, I actually go into people's homes and I see where they live. And a lot of that is, once they feel comfortable with you, it changes how they interact and they share more of their life with you. So, if kids feel comfortable in school, they're going to share more of the problems they're facing in their everyday life. And so, that's what I meant by that. I apologize if I didn't make that clear.
Thank you.
You have another question?
Yes, I do. Can you give me some examples of some things that you think our district is doing really well?
Well, I think, like I said, the programs that the high schools have are amazing. The technology program and just the way that a kid can fit their strengths. Because not every kid is going to go through the school the same way. So, like at West where they have the IB program, and it's more of an academic base and it gets kids ready for college and the academic side of it, that's an amazing program. I think kids that focus on the arts and are passionate about the arts, to be able to pick a school like East High and to be able to take that path. And the same with, you know, the culinary program that Preble has and the technology program that Southwest has. Plus, in addition to that, the district has like the Leonardo, or I'm sorry, yeah, Leonardo Da Vinci, the Da Vinci School and the John Dewey, which helps kids learn in a different format that works for them. I think all those are amazing programs. And Aldo is a similar one. Where, and I think having that diverse choices for families, it makes, I think it makes all the difference. It makes me feel more comfortable, it makes me feel like my kid can get the education that fits for him. And I think that's, I think that's important because I think we all see, not everyone learns the same way, not everyone interacts the same way. So, having those options and those programs, I think is a big deal. And I'm very, I wouldn't, I can't imagine a scenario that would cause me to leave the Green Bay Public Schools District just because having those options, I think, I think make a big deal. So, that's something I think they do amazing. I've been impressed with that. The last, my wife and I moved back to the area fifteen years ago and I've been impressed with that since we came back, so.
Can I take that just one step further and ask you if you have any insight or ideas or suggestions about helping the perception of our school district? How do you, how do you relate all that good news to people out in the public? Do you have any ideas about how we can do that? That we aren't already, that we aren't already doing?
I didn't share any stories, I didn't get to share stories. Yeah, because part of the problem, like my oldest son went to Aldo Leopold. And Green Bay West never sent anybody to Aldo to talk about their program and to share stories and to ring someone. The only reason we knew about it is because we lived in that community and I knew other people. So, I don't think the district is proactive enough getting the stories out there and maybe asking families to sign a release and talk about their experiences. Finding kids that graduate from these different programs and going on to something they want to do, seeing if they'll sign a release and talk about it. Because that's, that's the only way to do it. And like I said, had, if I had, had I not been connected to the West High community, my son going to Aldo, I would have never learned about, I would have missed out on that opportunity. And I wonder how many families have missed out where that opportunity might have worked for them. And so, I think it's, I think it's as simple as, you know, reaching out to families you know that, that are excited about it and asking them to share their story where they can't. And I think, and maybe getting, you know, I see the media show up for different things for the district. You'll sometimes about negative things, try to get them to show up for positive things because, because that's the only way it's going to change. And some, like I said, the big thing is, people like myself who have positive experiences need to keep doing the kind of things I'm doing. But I'm one voice and we need to find a way to encourage people to be more voices. And I'm starting to hear more, you know, within the community I'm at, but it just needs to be more. But the district, again, I think needs to be more proactive. When they go to these middle schools, I'm just focusing on the high school level, I'm sure there's other areas that matter. But when you're sending the high schools out, you know, when kids are going from eighth to ninth grade, send West to all the different middle schools, send someone from Southwest to all the different middle schools, and on and on, and to share those stories. And the same thing, like where the middle schools are sometimes offering different things, have them go to the elementary schools and share some of that story. Just, and again, I get it's, I get it's going to take some time commitment and some work, but I think it's important because I think too many, when I hear people leave the district to go to Ashland or to go to Howard, I'm thinking, why? What, do you not know what's here? It doesn't, you know, it doesn't make sense to me. So. I wish I had an easier answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you want to ask you a last question?
No, I think I'll skip that one.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
All right. Anybody else?
I do, I'm going to ask one more question.
Laura has one more question.
John, can you tell me, what do you think about the role of social media for board members? Do you feel like board members should have a large presence in social media? Just talk about how you feel about that generally.
I think that's an individual choice. I think it's an individual choice. I think if you're, if you're comfortable and you don't share anything, that's not, I think it's an individual, and I think obviously, anytime someone uses social media, you have to be responsible with it and you have to be clear. But I also think it's, it's a public position, it's an elected position. And so, if someone, and so, if you feel comfortable with it, then, and you're being responsible and responsive. But, because I think it can make a difference where people can feel connected. I think it's, I think it gives, because I think sometimes families feel like the district is disconnected. And I do think that's a problem it has. I think a lot of times when I talk to families, they feel very connected to the school, they feel very connected to the principal, they feel a disconnect when it goes to the district level. And so, I think if someone is comfortable and if they're responsible with how to handle social media, I think it can be a positive. But with everything else, it can also be a negative. I think we see, you know, examples on a national level where it's not done responsibly. And so, I think, like I said, ultimately, I think that's a personal choice. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
I don't have any more questions.
Andrew?
So, could you share your viewpoint on tax money being used to, tax money going to private educational programs through vouchers and so forth?
I don't think, I don't think voucher schools are a good thing. I think, I think money needs to stay, I think that's public education money and it should stay there. I think it's, I think if an individual chooses to educate their kids at a private school, I think that's, that's something that's on you. I think it's, I don't think, I don't think it serves the public good. I think it does more, I think it serves the whole public if it goes to public schools.
Any other questions? Okay, I think that's all the questions that we have for you, John. We thank you for your taking the time and to do this interview, even though you're still working. Do you have any questions?
No, not that I can, I think everything that I was hoping to talk about, I was able to talk about. Again, I want to thank you for accommodating me. I think that's, you know. You know, in general, my schedule is really flexible. We have very few events that I can't get out of and this just happened to be one.
Right, okay. Well, we appreciate you taking your time out this evening to talk to us.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, John.
Goodbye.
Bye. Can we just do that? High tech for me here. All right.
Does anyone have a highlighter? Handy.
Just got a handful of them. Green, pink, yellow.
You can have your choice of colors.
All right. How do you want to do this? I know I'm, the candidates were all good. So, I'm having personally a struggle actually coming up with my first choice, but...
I think when it does, when it does come time to vote, whether that's before or after some discussion, I think there's a specific way, and we did it the very, the first time I did one of these, I think it's important that order doesn't impact anything. So, I think any official vote should be, you know, written down, but sign your name. Because it's a, it's a public vote, but that takes whose order and the roll call out of the equation. But I'm not necessarily saying we need to be, I would feel the need to be so formal as to just take enclosed nominations before even saying a word either. I just think the actual vote should be that way.
Yeah, okay, I agree with that. Do you need time to use your highlighter?
Oh, yeah.
Can we take a couple minutes?
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe we can take a few minutes and just kind of process in our head. Boom, 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 boom.
Right, right. Yeah, because there's, you know, there's...
I need to sort this out, oh my God. So, is this how you do it? You just start, why I think this? Why I think, how do you do this?
Yeah. Well, of course not.
That's why he signed our names to him.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
No, a secret ballot for something this important would be over my cold, dead body. No. Even if we could, it would still be over my cold, dead body.
Okay, so, can I ask a question? So, what are you going to be asking us to come with? When we take a few minutes to go through this, what do you want us to do? Bring to you with this? What we're going over?
Did you, Andrew, it sounded like you wanted to have some conversation?
What, I'm just saying, whatever, whatever we do, I think the voting should be done in that method, so there's no order advantage to when you go.
Right.
I assumed, I assumed it would be likely that there might be some informal discussion first, but I'm not advocating for or against it.
All right.
I'm advocating for it. I just, I guess I'm just, because I haven't done this before, I'm just wondering, ideally, we were giving people with a lot of information, we took notes, but what are we looking for exactly? Is it an anecdotal? My opinion is, I feel this way about this person, is it that? Or is it similar to how we did the first round of this?
Well, that's how we did it last time, unless we wanted...
Yeah, there's, there's no rubric for this. It's, you know, it's your judgment, it's a judgment call here based on what you read in their application, what you know about them, what they had to say. And ultimately, whether or not you believe that of the, of the folks that we spoke with tonight, they would be the best candidate to bring forward, you know, to serve the best interests of the kids and families of the school district. I guess that's the way I look at it and...
We have to try to do this objectively as we can.
Yep.
Obviously. That's why I'm asking if there's anything specific that you ask for versus, I just want to be as objective as I can.
That is good. I mean, someone, I mean theoretically, someone could, this isn't my perspective, but someone, someone could from, come theoretically from a hard perspective that the thing that the board absolutely needs most is a person of color on the board as their ultimate priority. And it would be their right to act that way. Or that there must be an additional West Side board member because that's paramount important. That's not my position, but it would be someone's right to have it.
Okay.
I think I wouldn't be so oversimplified with it, but you could.
So, the answer is no, we're just going to kind of just go for it.
Well, what are you looking for? What are your priorities? You know, I happily share my priorities as far as what I would hope to find in a seventh board member here. And, you know, I think about that, what my priorities would be, and then I look at everything everyone had to say. And as an aside, it's going to be extremely difficult because these are fantastic people.
It's a good slate.
To a person. They're fantastic. And...
I'm just looking for a way that you can make this easier.
I think you're out of luck there.
I can't help you there.
We're all sitting in a situation thinking this isn't going to be easy, so I'm not sure we can make it easier.
Should we take a few minutes and then give our top three, or two, or one?
We only have seven.
Well, I would say, I don't want to go top three or top two. I, I think it's.
Start with one?
I, I think you have to now. You know, I believe that's what we did last time. And, you know, we discussed it. In the end, did we do a nomination and a?
I think if we're just gonna do top ones, then maybe we should do a, we should nominate and do a, do a signed ballot first. Unless there was some interest in a informal discussion where you're just kind of hear opinions and then do the nominations. I mean, the, and you could, you can still, under Robert's rules, you can add to the nominations if every, if the, if it was a massive tie at one, you'd have to get, you'd have to get a actual majority, which is four. So three to two to one wouldn't be a win yet.
I mean, there are only seven candidates. We could just take each candidate and talk strengths and challenges. Because what some may see as a strength, someone else may see as a challenge.
My recollection of the last time we did this is it didn't actually take that long to come to a consensus. It just, yeah.
I think we want to think this through.
Okay. If, if, I, I, I'm not going to disagree with that necessarily, but, um.
I'm just gonna start out by putting out there, um, I think this needs to be considered a fresh slate. And I appreciate the fact that Eric Duncan ran and came in fourth, but he's not being compared to the people that he ran against. He's being compared to these people.
Okay.
I guess I would, I would say as far as, you know, just looking how I look at the fact that Eric Duncan ran, I, I consider it a, a plus in that this is the third time he's shown clear interest in being here, though not, not any kind of an overwhelming plus, but I, I consider it a positive. I think, and I know there's gonna be a, some tension between the fact that on the one hand you ran, on the other hand, you didn't win. The way I look at that is being, if someone had finished last in a race, or if, for example, his race was one in which, if, if we had a one-on-one system and he lost in a one-on-one, that would be a clearer sign that, so I don't take a, a fourth out of sixth as the voters don't want you, but at the, um, same time, I don't, I don't give it overwhelming weight either. And I agree, it's a, it's a different, it's a different slate. And if we were bound by some kind of law that you can only look at people who have run in the last two years and not made it, we would probably be in a different place.
Are we talking about Eric Duncan? Is that, I mean, is this?
Well, two of us did.
Okay, but I mean, are we, are we gonna go down, are we going to go down and talk about specific?
Would that help you make your decision?
Um, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we need to do this, like I said, as objectively as possible. Um, and that it's, the conversation's happening. We know people will watch this tape, they'll want to know why. Um, and it will explain a bit of why one versus the other. I think as much as we can, I think it wouldn't hurt.
Oh, and, and I just put my, my comments saying that because I think there was a sense of entitlement, and I don't see that. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying yea or nay to him.
Okay.
But, but that's.
Well, if we're talking about, if we're talking about Eric Duncan, then maybe, maybe if we do, if we do say, all say, have the opportunity to say something about everyone if we wish, and then we'll have a better idea of what's going on before we would do the formal nominations. I, I can, that works for me. If, if that's, if that's what we're doing, I, I would say, aside from the election comment, I, I feel, I feel positive about Duncan and the perspective he would bring. I, I put value on the fact that he's shown the level of interest and commitment to, to being on the board. I think, um, I, I don't, I, I think he would be a, a positive addition.
I do think it's actually harder to apply for an appointment than it is to run. I just want to say that. I think it is more difficult to do that. Um, I think running a campaign is, is one thing. You're actually, you know, you're with other people. This, this is a lot more dissected. It's right with the school board. Um, I do appreciate his consistent interest in the position. I do appreciate that.
I would, I would, I agree with that. And also, I, I, um, a lot of the things he said tonight, I, he seems to have, he hasn't changed his opinions. Like, um, he seemed very consistent with what he ran on. And I think, um, also when we interviewed him. So, he's, he's kind of stuck to his positions.
And that's what I was gonna ask. So when he was, when he ran for the appointment or he applied for that, was it the same conversations? Is that what you're saying?
I, that's how I remember it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I do too.
Yeah.
Yeah, very consistent that way.
Okay.
And I guess, and this is what I liked about him last time, was the, um, his, he's definitely invested in, in, or, um, understands and is committed to the importance of public education for, for a community. Um.
Yes, I, I, yes, it comes through strongly.
Yeah. You know, I was a little, um, concerned with him as a, as a candidate during the election, um, uh, in terms of his insistence on the, um, I'm trying to look for the phrase that he used. Um. Yeah, and his insistence that the administration was so top-heavy. But, um, you know, it sounds like he's, um, willing to, to, uh, to listen and learn, um, and not, not just come in with a heavy hand in terms of wanting to do things without first figuring out.
And I think, I think Andrew did a good job with a clarifying question around that. And, um, clearly, it, it seems to me, he, he would be accepting of, of really what is happening, that as we have attrition, things are being reevaluated, rather than the idea of, of taking a hatchet to things. So.
Yeah.
Well, I'm ready to make a nomination, frankly.
Is there anybody else?
I've kind of, I've kind of narrowed mine to three.
I haven't narrowed mine yet. Can I take a few minutes?
Please. I have a top two.
There's some with, there's pieces of people I wish I could just bunch them all into.[1141.22][1141.32][laughing].
If someone, if someone's making a nomination, they could probably make it at any point. I mean, we could all make one anyways.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, with, with everyone's permission, I would like to nominate Eric Duncan to fill the vacant seat on the school board.
Are we going around just nominating who we choose? Is this what's happening?
We need a second first, so.
You actually don't for nominations.
We don't need a second for nomination?
No.
Okay, okay. Forgot that.
He's not in my top two.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a nomination for Christina Shelton.
Second.
We don't second nominations.
I'm tired.
It's okay, it's okay. She is in my top two, so I can look at that.
Can I, um, can we have some discussion on that? Okay.
Yep.
She's clearly comfortable in working with kids, with the community. I counted how many times she actually said the word "community." One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. She's, um, she's shown her commitment, um, in various ways. I do appreciate when people come to board meetings and speak to the board, and I mentioned this before, um, on issues when they feel strongly, they want to advocate. For me, this position really is, it, I'm looking for someone personally, for someone that is willing to advocate. And sometimes, as she said, to have some courageous conversations that are important to have, and not dance around topics. And I think that's, that's something she definitely is comfortable with. I appreciate that she's a parent in the school district as well, um, and kids that need to still go through high school. So she, she has an investment there. Um. I do also like, you know, she has a, she lives and breathes a growth mindset. Um, to me, what that means is she's always looking at everything with a critical eye. I think that's something that we, we definitely should, we should raise the bar for that every day. And I think that is what we ask of our kids in the district. And that's what I believe we should look to for a board member as well. Um, I'm really, I'm really, I'm really impressed with her, her commitment in general and what she's done. She's a wide range of, you know, she's been in wellness, she's been a teacher, she's been, obviously, in the classroom. She has an understanding and a level of experience that's, from what I've looked at, um, across the board of all the candidates, I haven't seen that in anyone. Um, she's also open to learning more as well.
I liked her openness to learning more. I also liked, um, I appreciate the wanting to have the courageous conversation. And I got the sense from her that she would do it respectfully and civilly. And I liked that about her. That, um, she would, you know, challenge, but do it in a way that she wants to make things better and with ideas and is, her willingness to get more information about things. I appreciate that about her.
Um, I, I felt pretty positive about, about Christina Shelton. I think the, um, the, the types of experiences that she's had, um, she's, um, she's been in a, she's been in a classroom at a couple different levels, even as a, even as a dean of students. And she's experienced that in a urban school district much, much larger than ours. So she is, um, she's seen that hands-on and is in a, a different role now where she, um, where she's still connected to kids in a, in a nonprofit. I liked her talking about the courageous conversations, um, thing. It's no, you know, it's no secret that I like the idea of hands-on leadership. I, I ran on it, but it's, um, you know, I ran on positive hands-on leadership, and I, I definitely picked up the, um, the positives there. Leading with strengths, but not being afraid to ask tough questions. I was very impressed.
I will say that, uh, and, you know, I was very comfortable with her and what she had to say. And, um, I looked at, as I was looking at these things, going back through the priorities that each of the candidates named or cited. And, uh, she was one of two that I ended up circling the top priorities as being, um, broad, but, but yet specific, wide-ranging, something that would really touch on, on everybody within the district. So, um, I did like that about her.
I also like Jake Magnusson.
Is that your first choice, Katie?
Um. Could go either way. They're kind of tied.
Is that a nomination?
I can nom, for the sake of discussion, sure, I will nominate Jake, Jake, Jake Magnusson.
Can I say something else?
Just about Jake?
No.
No, you can say something else.
Oh, go ahead.
This is informal, so.
Okay.
Follow the rules, Jake.
Okay, I'm trying.
We're not bound by motions and conversations and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. So, I think it's interesting, and I think it's notable when someone consistently chooses to be in, in environments where there are kids that have needs. I think that says a lot. Um, it's a natural, authentic interest, um, personal commitment, whether they realize it or not. I think that's something that, as a board member who's gotten to know, you know, quite a few kids in the district, obviously, just being, being a parent as well, but, um, just what I do know, what I've observed, I think it's nice to have someone whose natural instinct is to go to where the kids are. And I think that that's something that makes her stand out from the rest. I think she actually does that. And, without being prompted or, and sometimes not being paid. And I think that says a lot about her.
Although I would say the same about Jake and John Yankee from that perspective. I mean, their jobs have revolved around, you know, going to where the kids are.
I do, yes, but I would say, when you're not, when it's not a job, when there's not a paycheck involved, I think that actually says a lot about someone. Because as we know, we spend upwards of four to six hours at meetings when we sit here, um, a few times a month. And that, that is a commitment. It's, they're, you know, it's, you're here, it's, it's not about the money. You're here to, to really serve these kids. And if you have a person that has shown and demonstrated that they've been doing that without a paycheck, I think that's, that says a lot.
I thought she worked for the nonprofit.
She has worked, but she's actually also participated in a lot of, um, other organizations where she's not being paid. She's, she's, uh, says it in her letter, and then she mentioned it also in her interview. If I can find it. Somewhere.
Oh, yeah, she's.
It's hard because we don't actually, no one else reads the letters except us. You know, she served on the Alda Leopold School Wellness Team, participated in a district-level community meeting around the 2017 revision of our district's local school wellness policy. Um, she's worked, and I know she's worked, um, consistently with the Black Lives United Group. Um, she's definitely, um, doing a lot on her own time with her own energy for kids. And I truly appreciate that.
Does, um, anyone else have John Yankee in their top picks? No?
I, I feel positively, um, just, I feel stronger about someone else than I nominated him, but I would, I felt positive.
Okay. I liked what he said about, um, when he talked about safety in schools. It was basically a, an answer about the culture of a school. I liked that a lot. Um, I liked how positive he was about our schools and, um, you know, when he talked about being an advocate. Um, his work with Wisconsin Promise, I thought that added a lot to his resume. Um, I liked his answer about social media. I liked his answer about tax dollars in, um, in charter schools and voucher schools. And I like that he, you know, the way he talked about his own kids. I thought that was, um, interest, I found that interesting. I thought that was, um, I found that interesting.
I liked his advocacy for, did my microphones go out?
The fan went off.
The fan went off.
Like, all of a sudden, it got quiet. I liked his strong advocacy for our district, um, in terms of, of, uh, you know, he's, he's, um, talking about the, uh, programs with people and helping people understand what our district has to offer.
He seemed to have a comfortable understanding of what are, what are the current work that our district is doing, which I, which I appreciate.
I like his advocacy for special ed kids a lot.
Yes, yes.
And his ideas for, for, um, well, just the, um, how critically important it is to address the learning needs and, and other needs of kids with both of our, um, with the programs that we have at our high schools and, um, and then also our special ed programs that we have. And then his ideas for, for improving that. I think he, you know, has experience as a parent on, on both ends of that.
On the full spectrum, yeah.
Educational needs perspective.
Also, he said he was a fourth generation, yeah, that's a nomination. He was a fourth generation of his family to live and go to school here in Green Bay.
Did you nominate Jake?
Mm-hmm.
So we have four on the table?
Somebody asked who my other top one was, so I said Jake.
Oh, okay.
And then they made me nominate, so.
Oh, okay, got it.
I think that was, is that a nomination?
All right. For the sake of discussions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought the other three candidates also had, you know, good things that they would bring. I really appreciate Dan's, um, passion for advocating for our district and advocating for, for all kids. And he's, you know, committed his time also to, um, to our district. Gave a lot of time to that. He was chair of that task force.
It was a huge time commitment. And, um, and that's not the, you know, that's not the first time he's.
And I attended several of the meetings that he.
Yeah, yeah. It was a pretty, he played a, a large and, um, a significant role in that.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think that was an easy process, and, um, and he's in my top three. I'll just go ahead and say my other, my other person then, it's Dawn Smith. Sorry.
So are we looking at what we as a board need? Or are we looking at what the kids in our district need? What, what is our, just to kind of focus around what we're really looking at? What is, who is this, this decision for? Is it for the kids in our district? Is it for the district as a whole? What is the question we are asked right now?
Ideally, I would hope that it's the same regardless. I would hope that, I, I would hope that this board would, you know, if we're saying what the board needs is based on what we believe the students, the kids, and the families in this district need. If we're not saying that, you know, heaven help us, that's all.
Right.
I think we can assume that in all our, in all our dealings.
Now, among the six of us, we, we might have, you know, differing opinions on, on what either of those questions means. But, uh, I, I think, you know, taking it face value, we have to vote on the basis of what we think is the best interest of the students overall. And if we think that that may not square with, uh, the way we operate as a board, then, then that's another issue that we have to wrestle with. But I think that's got to be the question. Who's going to best serve the kids in the district?
Then I would look at who's been serving the kids in the district. I would look at that. I would think that if we're going to be asking ourselves, who would serve the best? Who's actually been serving them is a fair question.
Is a fair question. There are, and not, not being argumentative, but, but there are a lot of levels in terms of what does that mean? You know, those who are serving them the most are the ones closest to them. I think that you can say that. But, um, you know, we, we have technology, we have food service, we have people who keep the, the lights on. All of that serves the student needs. So it might not just be the fact that one individual is, has been hands-on as far as being of service to the district. I hope that's making some sense there, you know? I, I, I think of all the facets of, of what we have to do. You know, the, the first thing in 1-2012, and I talked with the administrators this morning, the duties of the school board, management of the, of the district. That's of the properties of the personnel of the operations. And that's our number-one duty. And ultimately, that is going to serve the children. So, uh, I'll get off my soapbox now, but, you know, it, it's, it's a pretty broad question.
So should we order a pizza? We're going to be here all night?
No, I'm done. No, I'm done.
I think, I think we'll get it within about three ballots.
Okay.
Actually, someone's calling me to ask where to stay by my dad.
Okay.
The hotel location, I'll be right back.
All right.
Should we take a break?
We'll just stop talking, yeah.
Okay.
We'll call that a break, because this group doesn't stop talking well.
Did we, did we, uh, I'm trying to remember, we did multiple ballots until we got a unanimous decision last time?
We don't need a unanimous decision.
I know we don't, but, uh.
But for some reason, I think last time we understood we did, and that's why that took so long.
It took longer.
Yeah.
Can we turn the fans back on?
All right.
We need paper.
I need that vest that's been hanging up there for five, it's the, one to the right of the red one.
Air is getting, air is getting still in here. Did you nominate John Yanki?
Yes.
You did, okay.
Everything okay?
Well, yeah, it's just the people who are visiting today were going to drive back, but now they're, they're asked about taking the hotel, and I mean, why not stay for anyways?
Yeah.
They're going to be visitors, they're just going to.
Are we voting?
Did we, did we fully vet Jacob though? Jake, who I nominated, anyone say anything?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize.
I won't open this, I'll leave him here.
It's still here.
Well, did any, did other people vote?
No one voted yet.
No one voted.
Well, I just thought we were.
No, these are just.
Are these votes that I have?
No, those are just pass them on.
Blank ballots to pass around.
They're just plain ballots.
Thought they were votes, so I sort of looked at them. I, I want to vet Jake since you nominated him.
Go ahead.
I liked his strong sense of, of duty to public education. I liked his background. I think working at the DVR, you have to have a certain, um, commitment to serve. I liked how he is very, was very articulate about his daughter's experience at Webster. I think the things he didn't know, he admitted he didn't know and was willing to learn about things. He just struck me as someone who was very positive and wanting to, uh, to work hard for the district. I appreciate his, the history that he had with the Future Phoenix Program. That goes way back to when it started with Cindy Shepherd.
I remember Cindy, yeah. She was awesome, yeah.
And I think he, uh, is just very, um, interested in getting more information and doing things with that information.
Yep.
I, I also, being nearly the oldest member on the board, appreciated the youth.
How old is he?
What, am I the oldest member? Longest, but oldest too?
How old is he?
No, you're not the oldest. Thank you very much for your lady me.
That's what I said, nearly.
No idea how, how old either of you are.
I missed that, I didn't see that.
He just seemed young, and the fact that he has a 10-year-old child, I mean, I just, he's younger than me.
I mean, I did like that he, he mentioned kids a lot for, I like that he mentioned kids, youth, at-risk youth, trauma and forced care. All of these words that we all know are necessary components of success right now.
Can I vet Dawn Smith now? Or, no, let's talk about Jake first. I don't have anything to add.
I don't know if there's anything. Anybody else have anything for Jake?
Everybody else?
I mean, I have no, I have no, I have no negatives about Jake. I, I feel strong, more strongly about the readiness of, of others and what they're ready to bring to the, what they're able to bring to the table right now. No, nothing bad about Jake.
Yeah, that's how I kind of felt about Qaron too. Qaron Ray?
He actually had some intriguing business ideas.
I was very intrigued by that.
In fact, the idea that he was really only committed to the six-month.
Yeah.
And really have to decide even earlier to get your nomination papers in. But however, I think we should keep his stuff for, you know, a more specific project.
Yeah.
Basically, because I think he had a, he was very intuitive.
Yeah, I liked him a lot, yeah. Very interesting man. Dawn Smith, um, her top priorities, more participation from parents, uh, school violence, school public health, bullying, empathy, racial discrepancy. I like, I liked everything she had to say about that. She said, you know, when she asked how she, would she advocate? She said, "I'm already in it, I already do that." I liked what she said about transparency. I liked how positive she was about our district. She just had a really, she had a very good letter, and she has an interesting resume.
She has been very, very involved in schools and the community, both she and her husband. They've alternately served on the, on the superintendent's parent advisory board.
Yeah, she's done an enormous amount of work. I think she'd fall into that category of unpaid work and, um.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, and just a huge commitment. So, I, I, I liked a lot of the things that she said.
I would agree.
I would too.
So is that a nomination?
Shall I nominate more than one?
You already did nominate her.
It's, it's legal to nominate more than one.
Oh, then I will nominate her, yes, please.
So can we clear up who's nominated now?
We have Christina Shelton, Eric Duncan, Dawn Smith, uh.
Jake.
Jake.
John Yanki.
And who nominated him?
And John.
I did.
Five nominations?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I nominated John Yanki.
So Laura nominated two people.
I did.
I didn't nominate anybody, but that's fine. We'll get with it then. I'm so indecisive.
I mean, ideally, we need to all do that, right?
No, we're going to vote.
The first ballot, we're probably, it'll be very interesting if someone got four on the first ballot, but it, stranger things have happened.
Are we, are we going to nominate Dan Kiernan? Does anyone, how do we, how do we want to?
Why don't we just say we can vote for anyone?
You can vote for anybody.
We can vote for any of the seven. So I don't think we need to not, continue nominating people.
It's not essential, yeah, we're doing.
Right, just vote for someone. And then we move on.
Either, you can, write-ins are legal anyways, even if you do.
But just, you know, I think entertain the slate of seven and vote. Are you ready to vote?
Brenda, do you want to talk about anybody?
No, I've talked about, God, I'm just having a horrible time.
Your notes are copious.
I know. I take copious notes because I want to remember everything. No, I've talked about quite a few.
I think this will work out within three ballots.
I had a very, very light dinner, so.
So are we, um.
What'd you say? I think this will be so within three ballots.
We're just voting for one?
Voting for one, yeah.
Are, should we, should include a second choice?
No, vote for one.
All right.
Well, is everybody ready to commit to one person? I am.
So what'd you say?
I said, "Is everyone ready to commit to one person?"
God, I don't know.
Well, that's like, she's sighing and you've nominated two, so.
This is very, but I'm saying, this is very likely to take a second ballot. And if four or five of us vote for the same person, then we're probably closer farther along than we thought.
Can I just say how much I love all this conversation?
Sure, you can say that.
You just did.
I just really do. I think it's the most we've had since I've been here, at this table.
The opportunity has presented itself.
I love it.
Pick one.
Did, did you vote today?
I did.
Oh, does anybody know any results?
Person for any position? Well, it's a fair question.
Don't say it, don't say it, don't say it.
What?
Nothing's been called.
Nothing's been called? Okay.
All, all the focus is on this.
We digress.
This is, we're lead with this.
Okay, is there something that you want to say about or ask about anyone else?
No. All right. Are you ready? Okay. It becomes a toss-up here.
This is a sign, this is a signed ballot.
Yes.
Did you sign yours, really?
Yes, yep. Yeah, it has to be a public vote.
And I need to see your voter ID, please.
I don't want to close it.
I know, you know, it's been two minutes.
I know, the suspense is killing me. No, there's no suspense.
All right. All right. Laura is John Yanki. Andrew is Christina Shelton. Ed is Eric Duncan. Rhonda is Christina. KB is Christina. Brenda is Christina.
So that's it?
There you go.
So, that's it. All right, so we have our new board member.
And I'm very, very comfortable with that. I think she's going to be wonderful.
Any other?
I think that nominations are a motion.
This was the vote. That was the vote. That was the vote, because you can't.
Four for Shelton, one for Yanki, one for Duncan.
Right.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, cast one unanimous ballot for Christina Shelton.
Technically, you can't do that, because when I was appointed, um, you tried to change your vote. Because everyone else voted, voted for me, except you.
That's a law within Robert's rules.
The motion has already passed.
The motion has already passed, so you can't change it.
But you can make a statement of.
You can make a statement, but we can't take another vote. The vote's been made.
But we can't change the votes.
Right.
All right, that's a statement of solidarity then.
All right, very good. All right, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
So moved.
Now you can second it.
Now you can second it.
Second, I'm so tired.
All in favor, aye?